Down. Time for a lovely meeting I know you all want to be part of. There's so many good things to celebrate tonight. So, welcome to the City Council Regular Meeting this Monday evening, April 15th. I now call the meeting to order. I invite everyone to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Deputy Clerk, could you now please call the roll?
With pleasure, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Hedges.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Lorraine.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Newsom.
Here.
Mayor Diaz Nash.
Here. Thank you. We are excited to be here in person, with options for those who choose not to be in person, to participate virtually. There are several ways to participate. For those attending in person, please complete a yellow Request to Speak slip and hand it to our deputy clerk. If participating remotely, use the Raise Your Hand feature in Zoom, and you will be called on at the appropriate time. If calling via phone, press star nine to raise your hand, and when called upon, please press star six to unmute. These options for public comment will remain available until I close the public comment period for each specific item. Before we begin, we are very excited to introduce to you a new addition to the San Mateo Consolidated Fire Family. I would now like to invite down, or welcome, Deputy Fire Chief Robert Marshall and our new Fire Marshal, Carissa Workman, for a brief introduction. Welcome.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. Wanted to introduce the new Fire Marshal to you, and also just tell you a little bit about what a Fire Marshal does. The Fire Marshal is kind of the non-operation person responsible for fire safety within the city. We do a number of different things. I think you guys probably know that we do inspections, that's the one that's easy, but we also do plan review of new buildings, public education, fire investigation, and kind of look at everything that's kind of the non-firefighter piece of what fire department does. So, after an exhaustive search, after I promoted to Deputy Chief, we looked all over the state, and we found Carissa. She's somebody that I've actually known for quite a while, and I've been very excited to have her join the San Mateo Consolidated Fire Family. So with that, Carissa.
Welcome, Carissa.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Happy to be here. I'm coming from San Diego. I relocated up here to San Mateo, actually, and I worked as a Deputy Fire Marshal at Heartland Fire and Rescue, serving three cities. And then I also, most recently, was the Fire Marshal for Santee for the past six years. So, looking forward to starting this new chapter, and being here and serving the citizens of San Mateo.
Thank you so very much. We wish you the best future. Thank you. So, we go from welcoming a wonderful new woman to our family, to saying thank you and adieu to another wonderful woman of our family. So, we are now going to turn to the City Clerk, Patrice M. Olds, Commendatory Retirement Resolution. And we will smile and cry at the same time. I think that showed that everybody in San Mateo wanted to take a picture with Patrice, right? And for very, very good reasons. So, thank you so much for that. That's beautiful. So, I now have the great honor of... I am going to read the resolution that is here.
Oh my God, that's tiny print.
Well, that's why I have this. There we go. There we are. Thank you very much to Martin and Erin for making that happen. So, City of San Mateo, Resolution Number C1, 2024. Thank you. This is the Deputy Mayor in action. Commending City Clerk, Patrice M. Olds, January 9, 2012, good start of a year, to April 26, 2024. Resolved by the Council of the City of San Mateo, California, that Patrice began her service with the City of San Mateo on January 9, 2012, and served as City Clerk with distinction to April 26, 2024. Whereas, throughout her service to the City of San Mateo, Patrice continuously championed and preserved the city's special relationships through countless recognitions, parades, special events, and goodwill exchanges. In doing so, Patrice strengthened the bond of friendship with our sister city of Toianaca, soared with the Eagles, the 101st Airborne Division, and helped enshrine a commemoration to the community's fallen heroes. Whereas, Patrice consistently demonstrated a deep labor of love for the City of San Mateo, for its residents, her colleagues, and the city councils with whom she served. In the wake of the COVID-19 pandemic, Patrice harnessed this labor of love to help protect the health and well-being of those most vulnerable in her community. Patrice contributed significantly to the reimagining of city services, most notably allowing essential business to continue while ensuring public participation is protected, her number-one principle, through establishing virtual city council meetings. Amidst evolving health and legal requirements, Patrice unwaveringly kept the lights on at City Hall to help facilitate the safe and accessible connection between the community and its public officials. Whereas, through her 12 years of dedicated service, Patrice committed to a vision of broadened and deepened connections between the community and its local government. This vision was demonstrated through innumerable efforts to reduce the barriers to participation with the city's boards and commissions, and substantial enhancements to the city's agenda and records management systems. As the custodian of records, Patrice played an instrumental role in modernizing San Mateo's records management, from extensive citywide policy enhancements to digitizing public records for greater access and transparency to local government. Whereas, Patrice's breadth of experience and institutional knowledge served as a vital resource for everyone she interacted with, and you see that here tonight. If you needed to know something, some obscure factoid about the city's history, odds were favorable that Patrice widely regarded as the city's historian, and that title does not go away with her retirement, either knows every detail, or took great joy in sharing it, or if she did not know it, she would scour pages and pages of records to find out. Whereas, as San Mateo's chief elections official, Patrice administered seven municipal election cycles and led the city's historic transition to district-based elections in 2022. In doing so, Patrice proudly ensured the safe and accessible conduct of the local democratic process, while setting the standard in providing for an engaged and informed electorate. Whereas, Patrice served the profession of municipal clerk with distinction, providing mentorship and leadership to fellow clerks throughout its professional associations, including serving as treasurer and president of the California City Clerks Association, Chair of the California Athenian Leadership Society, Northern Division Trustee on the CCAC Board, and Secretary to Chair on the Northern California City Clerks Association. What role did Patrice not play? Her leadership within the clerk's profession was formally recognized through the Award of Municipal Clerk of the Year in 2021, and a Lifetime Achievement Award in 2024, and that's where the dancing and the photo came from you just saw. Whereas, Patrice exemplified the adage of "a good leader takes a little more than their fair share of blame, and little less than their fair share of the credit." In the lives of those she led, she helped mold people through both personal and professional growth by providing grace, guidance, and honesty. During times of struggle and tribulation, Patrice stood by her staff through adversity and went above and beyond to provide support however it was needed, and I'm sure everyone in every one of those city councils would say the same thing about Patrice. Whereas, the true price of leadership is the readiness to place the needs of others above your own, whether it be at a boards and commissions appreciation dinner, or tabling at a community event in Central Park. Patrice was regularly found to be the last to take a break, to get in line for food. She truly cared about those with whom she felt privileged to lead, and consistently demonstrated the virtue of putting the needs of others above her own. Whereas, Patrice is the proud Nana to Aria and Ronan, and with this retirement, she looks forward to spending quality time with her husband Louis, her daughter Elizabeth, sons Andrew and Brandon, and she looks forward to future get-togethers with her fellow, well-deserved retired friends. Now, therefore, this council does hereby confer upon Patrice Marie Olds. Patrice Marie Olds has earned the highest accolades for her unwavering dedication to enhancing the fabric of San Mateo. Her tireless efforts have transformed the city into a beacon of excellence, making it not just a place to work, but the best place for work. Patrice's remarkable engagement with the community is truly commendable, characterized by her warm and welcoming demeanor. Her profound integrity serves as a guiding light in every endeavor she undertakes, instilling trust and respect among all who know her. Adopted this 15th day of April, 2024, Lisa Diaz Nash, Mayor, Robert Newsom Jr., Deputy Mayor, Adam Lorraine, Councilmember, Emma Rensley, Councilmember, Rich Hedges, Councilmember. Thank you, Patrice. I think the only way we're going to stop is if we sit down. I know that.
Looking for her to give us the cue to sit down.
Yes. So, I think, Patrice, it's up and over to you.
Well, thank you so very much. I just have a few brief comments, and I had an aha moment in watching the film that clearly I will wear any hat somebody puts upon my head. Just no questions asked, go ahead, crown me. So, I first want to say thank you for allowing me to be your City Clerk for the past 12 years. It's been my honor, privilege, and delight to represent this community in this role. I am so proud of this organization, and its forward-thinking planning, innovation, positive leadership, collaboration, and for the true family-like work environment. This all creates a workplace where true team dynamics, productive exchanges happen, and real problem-solving can occur. I am so thankful to have served with an incredible team of elected leaders since 2012, current and former. Your representation and deep commitment to this community is outstanding, and I will continue to be inspired by your accomplishments, dedication, and commitment to always placing the city first. I will continue to wish you the very best, and I'll be watching.
That's the way.
To the employees of the City of San Mateo, you are the heart and soul of this organization, and without you, nothing would get accomplished. I am so proud to serve beside you and follow in your footsteps. I consider every colleague here a partner, and have been so happy to work with all of you these many years as part of our City of San Mateo family team. To the executive leadership team, past and present, my favorite moments in this career have been problem-solving with you, innovating, partnering, stepping in together to make staff stuff happen, and mostly, I will treasure your friendship and support. I will always hold you in my heart. And to the absolutely incredible, small but mighty, amazing City Clerk team, from Kathy Costa, Joan Disken, and Kasia Ravi, from the early days to the incoming incredible team of City Clerk, Martin McTaggart, and Management Analyst, Aaron Fellers, the incredible... Your vision, forward-thinking, can-do attitude, ability to make any situation doable, fearlessness in the face of adversary, embrace of my weird party-themed ideas, ability to figure out sometimes weird technology, no matter how often it changed. You address it all with a calmness and professional approach to handling everything, from sometimes negative comments, always demonstrating a deep understanding of the law, rules, and regulations, and procedures of California and the City of San Mateo. Your care and shepherding of being the city's process keepers is so deeply valued. Thank you for the fun, the laughter, the creativity, the commitment, caring, and the hard work. You are the best of the best. Martin, I know you will take this role to the next level and beyond, and I can't wait to see what you do next. I know it will be amazing, and I'll be watching also, but that's not a threat. To the community of San Mateo, thank you for welcoming me so wholeheartedly, your embrace of the clerk's roles, kind comments, coupled with your willingness to let me shush you when needed, and your respect for this institution and our what makes for a wonderful community. Thank you for your always candid and honest feedback. I always felt you were partners with the city organization, and thank you for that. And to my wonderful family, my husband Louis and daughter Liz are here, both here tonight, and my two boys Andrew and Brandon, and daughter-in-law Anna. I thank you for your patience, for the late nights, allowing me to dwell and dwell and dwell on work issues, and spending an inordinate amount of time at work and on events. Your support and care of my professional goals have made all the difference. I love you all. I came here as a stranger in 2012 with high hopes for making this my work forever home. I was folded into a community and found a true home. You will never leave my heart or my memories. Thank you all.
So, I think a number of people on the council would like to say something to you, Patrice, so I think you do have to stand up again. All right, so, Councilmember Lee, why don't you start us off?
What would Patrice do? That was the first and most poignant bit of advice I got when I joined the council. Whenever you're stuck, think, "What would Patrice do?" And that is the advice that I think will stand and outlive all of us, I hope, on this council, because your legacy is with us always. Patrice, you've been our moral compass here, unwavering in your dedication and your compassion. You are living and breathing and holding space for democracy in its best form. And I have so many memories of what that looks like when I think of you. It's your whiteboard in your office, perfect and organized. It's watching you come in to our council chambers early to tape off chairs so we can be six feet apart during the pandemic, when we wanted to keep everyone safe and still make City Hall a welcoming place where everyone has a voice. It's all your hats. It's you driving our Toianaca visitors in a bus wherever they want to go. And so many personal memories. The one that I always think of is the first time I came to City Hall with the question. And I didn't know anything about our city. All I knew is that the community center down the street from me was named the Martin Luther King Community Center, and I wanted to know why and how it got its name. And I came into your office and asked the question, and you said, "I don't know, but let's find out." And you invited me back to your table, and we sat together hovering over your computer, looking at old archives and digitized versions of meeting minutes, and trying to figure out how the King Center got its name. And that's the level of accessibility and transparency that you have emulated and made possible in our city to anyone who walks through your door, anyone who has a question. And that is what it feels like to belong. That's what it feels like to belong in a community, when you're welcomed, when your questions are considered, when there's room for curiosity and exploration and learning together. And that's what you gave me, and I really do believe that that was one of the most formative moments of my experience with this city. And being able to think about what other questions I wanted the answers to, those were the moments that defined the course of so many of our lives. You touched all of us so profoundly. And I think that when you say you'll be watching us, I know you will, because the one thing that you don't want to get when you're up on the dais is the Patrice side eye. And it goes back to the best advice I ever got, which is, "What would Patrice do?" Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, why don't you go, Deputy Mayor?
We're going to miss you so much, Patrice. I've only been on the council a little over a year, but, you know, I've been involved with the city business for a very long time. You've always been one of the most compassionate people I've ever met, and I've known you to be so friendly and so open and so kind to so many people. And then, really, it wasn't until this year, when I actually was on this side of the dais, that I realized that behind that is also a steel will and an iron lady backbone of, "Do you don't want the Patrice side eye, and you certainly don't want to be shushed by Patrice?" But ultimately, there, more than anything, is that just tremendous compassion, and for that, you will be so missed. You've run all of our meetings with pomp and decorum, always an eye for protocol, process, and procedures, and we need that. You've always been available to everyone in the city, its residents, its staff, and in particular, us on the city councils. You're leaving huge shoes to fill, but I also wanted to make sure that I thanked your family, because you've given so much of Patrice's time to us, and now we're very happy that she's going to be spending her retirement and get to spend more time with you. So, thank you for letting Patrice be part of our family, and we know you'll be watching us, so we'll stay on our best behavior. Thank you, Patrice.
Thank you. I think Councilmember Hedges would like to go next.
Hi, Patrice. God, am I going to miss you. You've always been so good to me. For a long time, I've come and asked you questions, long before I got on the council, and you've always had almost an immediate answer. And when I got on the council, I said, "If I need information, what should I do?" There was a chorus of voices that said, "Ask Patrice," and you always had the answer. And I always felt secure when I knew you were here at meetings, that anything that went wrong would almost immediately be fixed. Things seldom went wrong because of your planning, but when they did, and usually it was things out of everybody's control, you were able to fix them immediately. You were so good at answering questions, not only my questions, but anybody from the public that asked. You always had a great answer. And I'd ask you sometime ago, "What are we going to do without you when you retire? What about succession training?" And you said, "I'm on it. I've got somebody good." Do you remember that?
Oh, yeah.
And what I didn't know at the time was that you trained one of the best replays of smunts we could ever have.
Absolutely.
So even when you knew you were leaving, you were taking care of us. So I will tell you that your succession training has worked out, and I will just say, you wear all hats well. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And Councilmember Olderein.
What an honor it is to be here today. Patrice, thank you for modeling the way for council, for the clerk's office, and the city of San Mateo. We've, we've heard so much already, so many great words resonate when we think of Patrice M. Old's: professional, steadfast, consistent and fair, but quietly acknowledging and appreciating good behavior; friendly and caring for everyone coming into City Hall; striving for excellence and service; working with your staff to bring the very best to the city every day. I'm very glad that you were acknowledged for this by, of course, those in this room, but your peers and authorities in your field multiple times. And as Councilmember Hedges mentioned, thank you for mentoring the next generation, who themselves are already getting accolades. It's a testament to, to what you, what you brought to us. And just personally, as others have mentioned, I really, I think, the, the crowning moment for me and my experience with City Hall and, and, and you is your work here during the pandemic, and, and just ensuring that council meetings continued to reach the people. People like me, who were just sitting in my apartment alone and, you know, tuning in to see what was going on out there and, and what, what were we going to be doing in these times. It was very important. It was very important. Thank you so much. I'll never forget coming into your office for the first time when running for council. It was a memory I'll never forget, and I imagine the same is true for anyone else who's been to Patrice's office. Win or lose, I felt like a VIP, getting some of your time, and, and I felt completely informed and prepared with regard to what the city expected me to do when I left. It's the sort of thing that could be taken for granted, but so many in this room do not and will not. It's been a distinct privilege to watch you serve the city from this different vantage point in council chambers as well. After tough meetings, after long meetings, and after tough and long meetings, you always upheld and raised the profile of our city. And you did so by sharing your love, your love for this work and for this city. So thank you so much, Patrice, for sharing so much of your love with us.
Yes, to everything that has been said, but the one thing I want to add is how much you have taught me, and I'm sure taught all of us, both in terms of when we were new on council and ongoing. I mean, the number of times I would call you up or knock on your door and say, can I come talk to you about something? And we would talk it through and come up with ideas, and I just learned so much, not from you standing there and saying, here are all the things you need to know how to do, but telling me about experiences and how to apply them and what to think and what to consider. And that you represented everyone at that point. You represented your team, you represented the city staff, but most importantly, you represented the community. And I think the fact that everyone is here, and I'm sure there are many people watching well beyond who's in the chambers, who has a Patrice story about how life has changed because of you. And I had a particularly wonderful experience with you on the Fallen Heroes Memorial Committee, and that is something that is near and dear to your heart. And when I heard that Patrice was leaving, and it was going to be before the Fallen Heroes Memorial ribbon cutting was going to happen, oh my God, how could that happen? Because she was the heart and soul of it. But Patrice, you assured me that, no, you're not going anywhere until that happens, because you are true to your principles and you are true to the people, and you are true to yourself in that process. You know what's important, and you have lived that in every way. I also would like to very much thank your family, that I can see through Martin, hello over there, and, and your two sons who are, you know, with you virtually here tonight, but, and your grandkids. We hear so much about those grandkids, I must say, but it's a wonderful thing, and thank you so much. It is a, it's a life of service for everyone in the family, not just the person who has the, the role in the office. But I also would like to share that you're a pixie, and you have fun, and I have seen you music in the park with your friends, sitting down in the picnic blanket and having a glass of wine and enjoying the ambiance and loving the fact that you are in San Mateo. And that is where I see you just most of yourself. So we look forward to having you come back for lots of music in the park, lots of picnic blankets, lots of glasses of wine, and whenever you have the opportunity, please come back and be part of our family, because you are always part of it, no matter where you are. And I know I speak on behalf of every city council member you have served with, that we are all so much better for, and we thank you so much for all of your service.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
So I think we have just a few people who would like to come up and say things, so maybe you might like to, it's going to be a while, I think, so maybe you want to sit down? Yeah. But first, I know that Kevin Fong from Kevin Mullin's office is here and would like to present you with something. And there's someone who you might know coming with him. Samantha Weigel, who left our office, but we still love you.
Madam Mayor, members of council, thank you so much for having us here this evening on behalf of Congressman Kevin Mullin, as we honor and recognize Patrice Old for years of dedicated service to this city. Patrice, in your 12 years with the city, the city's gone through so much change. In your tenure, you've gone through four city managers, council members have come and gone. We started right around the same time down here, and I don't think there's a council member from that time, that, from that original council that's still on here. But the one constant through all this change has been your steadfast leadership and guidance to the city, city staff and the council. And so the city owes you, the city and its community owes you a great debt of gratitude. And so on behalf of Congressman Mullin, just want to say congratulations on a well-deserved retirement and best wishes as you start this new chapter in your life. And I would like to turn it over to a familiar face who has a few words to say as well.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Diaz Nash. And Patrice, I was so excited when I had an opportunity to come here tonight and see you. So I'd just like to start out by saying, I venture that a lot of people don't actually know what a city clerk does. However, I can tell you, having covered local government for over a decade, they do a lot, and your role has been so incredibly vital, and you've carried so much responsibility, and you've done it with tact and with grace. You know, for over 12 years, you have worked tirelessly to ensure that everybody could be here in meetings like this and participate in the city's business and public engagement opportunities. Really, without you, I think there's so much that wouldn't have occurred, and, and your leadership has been absolutely invaluable, not only to the organization, but to the community. You've also, you know, navigated countless crises, not to mention the global pandemic, where you wore certainly a lot of hats, some of them fun and some of them not so much, but you always did it with an incredible resolve and just real kindness in your heart. I know that you also care really, really deeply about civic engagement and democracy. I would say not only are you the best city clerk in the entire state of California, and we know that you've been awarded that, and it was very well deserved. I also will just say that genuinely knowing you as a person, I truly believe you are one of the kindest, most generous, honest people that I will ever have the pleasure of meeting in my life. You've been a mentor to so many in the profession. I think it's a testament that you've got staff here that have been with you for years. And you've also been helping to raise really the next generation of city clerks. Congratulations, Martin. Excited to see you up there. You know, personally, I really felt like I could always go to you, and I did on so many occasions, seeking your advice. I always felt like you were someone that I could trust, and I truly do miss sitting across your desk, talking through tough issues, and no matter what it was, I always walked away feeling appreciated and supported, and that meant the world to me. So you have done so much for me in my career, and I will forever be indebted to you for that. Again, you've taught me about, you know, how important it is for public servants to hold ourselves to high ethical standards and really the value that public service can have in a community. And so I will just close in saying that no one deserves this retirement more than you. I'm so excited that you're going to have more time with your family and hopefully enjoying more Grammy camp duties. So, thank you, Patrice.
I'd also like to announce that Patrice received a proclamation from the Board of Supervisors, provided by Supervisor Noelia Corzo, who unfortunately couldn't be with us tonight, but they send their appreciation and great gratitude. So thank you very much. So I think now, Martin, we might have a few people in the community who want to say something, yes?
That's correct. We have a couple of additional speakers who wish to comment and provide some support for Patrice. So our first speaker will be Maria Godfrey.
It's not a hat.
Yeah.
It will make sense when you open it. Okay. Hi, good evening, City Council, all of you. I'm gonna, I'm sorry, I don't mean to be rude. Maybe I can sit here or stand here and use my teacher voice, okay? But I'm here representing Blood Free San Mateo Coalition and all its members. So happy and just excited to represent them and to be able to celebrate you, and thank you profoundly for everything that you have done, not only for 12 years, but continue to do and will continue to do. Because, you know, when often we think we've come to the end of something, we really are just coming to the beginning of something new, and it's something different and possibly exciting and hopeful, okay? And it's a blank slate. It's an opportunity to reinvent, to do things the way that you now have time to do. And the good news about that is that the sails that are going to take you in different directions are full of all your acquired wisdom. So we can't tell you how much, and I know you cannot imagine how much you're going to be missed, but we hope that these winds of change will bring you everything your heart hopes for and everything that you need in this new chapter. You're welcome.
Tom Lees.
I didn't think I was going to be called on so early. Anyway, I want to apologize for all the ruckus I caused. I was misbehaving a lot, and you always put me in my place, and I appreciate that. But, you know, it's been an honor to watch you and Martin together. I mean, when there was like crises and stuff, you were like, everyone has already said, everything can be said, but you were always, just sitting back here, you would always steady the ship or bring up some obscure rule. I mean, your knowledge, you would bring up, no, you can't do this, and you'd recite the rule, and then, you know, when you brought, I forgot what it was, but when I went to the City Service Academy, you brought some item that's been in the City Hall for so long, and then just your, your, like what everyone says, your character, your demeanor, and then when I see you at outside of the City Hall, you're like really funny and joking and cool, and, you know, you're just a great person, and you have a beautiful family, and you, like everyone has said, you've been a huge asset to, to the city, and I always look forward to seeing you and seeing you on Zoom when you're watching them. So I'll watch you watch them, and then I'm just so welcome to you, Martin, and thank all of you for your service, and I appreciate all of you and everyone, everyone that everyone does for the city, and welcome to you. I got an email about boards and commissions from you, so I know you're doing your job, so. So just in, you know, just have as much fun in your retirement as possible, and don't worry about it. We'll probably be okay over here, but thank you so much. I love you, I really do. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Thomas Morgan, followed by Michael Weinauer and Michael Nash.
Patrice, there's just not enough thank yous in the world to say how incredibly grateful I am to have had you and got to know you over the years. You've been the only city clerk I've known, followed the city for quite a while, probably more than anybody. So you're definitely going to be missed. You're a great partner to the community as part of San Mateo United. We've always appreciated your help getting, coordinating speakers to our meetings and helping us with the Hill Maintenance Award to make and highlight what makes San Mateo special and all the events, the 100th Airborne, the Toyanaka. Those are great events, but I felt like they were extra special because you enjoyed them so much, and, and it's like, I hope that they can continue having their, their specialness and the uniqueness as they go forward. Probably most of all I'm going to miss is your great smile. It's probably not going to be said too much tonight, but you were always positive and refreshing and really always lit up the room, even during tough situations, so thank you.
Let's see if I can get through this without crying. The only thing we're worried about the fire marshal getting us for tonight is the flowers, the quantity of flowers we have here. Might violate something by having too many of them. The, the city clerk's office is kind of the nerve center of City Hall. Seemingly, everything flows through or involves somehow the city clerks, the face of which, in my experience, has typically been you. From very public-facing roles like myriad inquiries right at the counter, emails, phone calls, to running council meetings. Maya Angelou said, people will forget what you said, people will forget what you did, but people will never forget how you made them feel. And my first interactions with you were, were here, where you made me and countless others feel very welcome and included, as you politely and kindly guided me and other newbies through the easily intimidating public comment process, while helping maintain order and decorum. My favorite will always be the Patrice, the look, which has obviously been mentioned several times here. Martin, you're going to have to get some glasses and practice looking over the top of those things down at the, the miscreants in the audience. I always carefully endeavored to not fall within her gaze, but fortunately, Tom was usually here to cause, cause problems and draw that. And of course, your handling of the people like the awful racist trolls that were plaguing our meetings recently was really a masterclass in grace under fire. But there's so much more that you did that was out of sight and behind the scenes, from public records requests to petition signature validation, sorry about that, to managing the elections, the 101st Air Force, Airborne Division, Toyanaka, et cetera, et cetera, to celebrations for outgoing and incoming councils, and countless other things that I'm undoubtedly not even aware of, much less able to show appreciation for. The person making all of this seeming magic happen for as long as I can remember has been you. Always friendly, always organized, always welcoming, always fair, always knowledgeable with a smile, compassion, and empathy. I'm certain you've forgotten more about how our beloved but often Byzantine city is operated than most of us will ever know. Patrice, you're the very definition of the ideal of a public servant. You well and truly serve the public, whomever that was, never expecting recognition, praise, or thanks, even though you surely deserve more than you've gotten of all of those. Without prejudice or malice to anyone, you always did your job, and you did it Without prejudice or malice to anyone, you always did your job, and you did it so very well, you made it look effortless, even though it most certainly was not. Your successor has very big shoes to fill, no pressure, Martin, but you've learned from the best. So on behalf of myself and a grateful city, I wish you a fun farewell, Patrice. Thank you for being the face of our beloved San Mateo and for making our fair city through your faithful service a place that we can all be proud of. That is your legacy, one that you can rightfully be proud of. One of my favorite quotes from my favorite Calvin and Hobbes, favorite comic Calvin and Hobbes, Bill Watterson. They're sleeping in the summer, just taking a nap, and he says, "You know, there's never enough time to do all the nothing you want to do." So while we'll miss you immeasurably, we wish you, I wish you, a long and happy and prosperous retirement, with plenty of time to do all the nothing you want, mixed in with all the laughs with your husband and kids, and all the snuggles you can handle from your grandchildren, of course, and all those hats, whether figurative or real, you rocked them. Thank you.
Wonderful being last. You have nothing left to say. So in the pattern of our president, ditto. At any rate, Patrice, any interaction I've had with you has been outstanding, and I've heard for half an hour your praise, which is so well deserved, and I just encourage you to capture this, to get the video and to save it in a safe place, because five years from now, 10 years from now, you'll be thrilled to listen to it again. You know, you've earned, enjoy the honor you're receiving. With that, thank you. All right, so just a couple of more things that we would like to present from Council. Who would like to help? Hey, come, Council members, we've got some joint work to do. Okay, so let us all come on down. You're going to go that way. Okay, there we go. I think the florists in San Mateo are doing very well today. Patrice has done good things. So we'd love to present these beautiful flowers we're going to give to you. And annual past national party. Patrice is going to open up her own florist shop after this, I do believe. Well, that is a moment no one can duplicate, but we have some other fairly magical things to talk about tonight. So our next item on the ceremonial calendar is Dispatcher Appreciation Week, otherwise known as National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. So I would like to invite Kelly O'Keefe, the Police Technical Services Administrator, to come on down. There we go. With the chief, too, all right. Okay, you really right.
She's my bodyguard.
That's the truth. That's the truth. So the following proclamation. Whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of public safety personnel is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas the dedicated public safety dispatchers serve the citizens of the city of San Mateo on a daily basis by answering emergency and non-emergency calls for assistance and coordinating public safety field units. And whereas these professional, career professionals answer over 20,000 911 calls annually, think about that, 20,000 calls. And whereas these professionals measure their success in the lives that are saved by the 911 system each and every day. And whereas public safety telecommunications provides a vital link for our police officers by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas public safety communications professionals work under challenging and stressful circumstances, and that is an understatement. And whereas public safety communications professionals dedicate their lives and careers to helping others. And whereas in 1991, the United States Congress, in their wisdom, designated the second week in April as National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. And whereas California Public Safety Telecommunications Week recognizes all public safety dispatchers who are an integral part of California's first responder team, who work 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and serve as the first critical content for our citizens and our emergency services. Now therefore be it resolved, the City Council of San Mateo declares the week of April 14th through April 20th, 2024, to be National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in honor of the men, women, and people whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens safe. Signed, Lisa Diaz Nash, Mayor, April 15th, 2024. Congratulations.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. We know it's a busy night, and we appreciate you taking the time to recognize our dispatchers. I just wanted to reiterate what the proclamation says and how grateful we are for the incredible dispatch center and those who staff it. They are amazing. They are truly the first first responders. They are a lifeline for both our residents and our police officers. They literally save lives on a daily basis. And I'd like to introduce Kelly O'Keefe, who does a tremendous job in managing our 911 center here in San Mateo.
Thank you. I won't take up too much time. I just, it really is an honor to be here and to have the work of the dispatchers be acknowledged. They don't ever get a ton of attention, and they don't want a bunch of attention, but now we're giving them a week, and it's great for you guys to acknowledge them. So I appreciate it, and thank you so much.
Thank you, and don't go away. And now we have one more wonderful ceremonial item, Volunteer Appreciation Week, and Denise Garcia, our Management Analyst with the City Manager's Office, is going to tell us about it.
Thank you. I have a presentation prepared, so I'll just wait for that to start. But in the meantime, it is Volunteer Appreciation Week, starting this month on the 21st. So we just thought it was a really great opportunity to highlight some of our amazing volunteers who just shine really brightly this year. Thanks, Erin. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Denise Garcia, Management Analyst, and I oversee the citywide volunteer program. Thank you for the opportunity to highlight some amazing folks today. And we can move on to the next slide. Our citywide volunteers totaling approximately 1,400 individuals this past year contribute immensely across various departments, some of which you can see here, which include the Police Department, Fire Department, Boards and Commissions, and community-led groups. Tonight, I'll spotlight six exceptional volunteers, all of whom stem from one of the areas listed here on this slide. First, we'll give it up for Fred and Ray. Thank you. Fred and Ray have been invaluable assets to the organization in their roles as police chaplains. The program creates a partnership with various faith-based leaders of the community to respond and assist police to provide an overall better quality to the community. Fred and Ray are on-call 24/7 and routinely provide the emotional, social, and spiritual support for police officers and the people in need. They make themselves available to provide appropriate assistance, advice, comfort, counsel, and referrals to those in need and who may request their support. They've attended countless ceremonies, memorial services, critical incidents, and have assisted with making numerous death notifications. Fred and Ray perform their responsibilities in a professional manner, and we are very fortunate to have them as volunteers. So I'd like to present to you Fred and Ray. If you can stand up here. Thank you. And next, I want to bring up Amy and Ben. Thank you. As they walk up, and they can bring the whole family.
What about Mia?
Amy and Ben, a dynamic couple dedicated to improving their community from the ground up. They proactively reached out to the Team Up to Cleanup administrators eager to organize cleanups in the north-central neighborhood. Their vision is to unite neighbors, parents, and students from College Park Elementary in a collective effort to maintain a debris-free environment while fostering community bonds. Not stopping there, Amy and Ben go the extra mile by sharing educational materials with volunteers, ensuring everyone understands the positive impacts that their actions have on the environment. Their self-driven leadership and unwavering passion for making a difference make them invaluable assets to our volunteer program. We're immensely grateful for their inspiring dedication and commitment to building a better community for all. And lastly, I'm excited to introduce Evie and Boden. They're here. An exception. An exceptional brother and sister duo whose commitment to our monthly Team Up to Cleanup program is truly commendable. Rain or shine, they're there, setting a remarkable example of dedication and reliability for our volunteers. What's even more inspiring is their initiative to extend their efforts beyond our organized cleanups, as they regularly venture to the bay to pick up trash in their own free time. You can see Boden on this photo on the left on a kayak, and so is Evie, she's on there too. Their passion for taking care of the environment is inspirational for young Samiteans, motivating them to get involved and make a positive impact. Let's all follow their lead and work together to create a cleaner and more sustainable future for San Mateo. And now I want to invite the mayor to come down and take a photo and just thank our volunteers. Your service is very much appreciated. Thank you.
Absolutely. We have the future as well as the present. We have so many great volunteers. This is Fred. I got it. Thank you so much. And Mia would give you a very special award. It's magic. Because Mia is part of this family, so much volunteer as well. Thank you, thank you. Absolutely. We have Boden. And you. And we have Evie. Smile, right? I got it right. Okay, that's great. So thank you all very much. This is what San Mateo is all about. We have the present, and we have the future. I think we're in good shape. There we go. That's one of the advantages. Thank you. Can we keep going? Is everybody okay? Yeah? Okay. Well, now we have to get down to daily business, but what an incredible start to the evening. Thank you all so much. So we are moving on to our consent calendar now. So Deputy City Clerk, could you please read the consent calendar?
With pleasure, Madam Mayor. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered by the Council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion without discussion. If discussion is desired, that item may be removed and considered separately. Item number four, Citywide Small Trash Capture Project Agreement. This item has been pulled from the agenda at the request of staff and will return to the Council at a later date. Item number five, Shoreview Park Restroom Remodel Construction Contract. Item number six, Temporary Standby Generator for Dale Avenue Pump Station Upgrade Change Order. Item number seven, 2024 Annual Investments Police Policy Approval. Item number eight, Enterprise Resource Planning Software Project Supplemental Budget Appropriation and Change Orders. Item number nine, City Council Priority List Adoption. And finally, item number 10, B Street Pedestrian Mall Improvement Project Bid Rejection.
Thank you very much. So is there any member of the Council who would like to pull an item from the consent calendar? No? Okay. If any members of the public who wish to comment on any consent calendar item, now would be the time to make your comment. This is for consent calendar items only. Do we have any requests?
Through the mayor, I have no request to speak on the consent calendar.
Okay. Then is there a motion from Council?
Move approval of the consent calendar.
Okay. Second, all right. So if you could read the roll.
Just to clarify, that is Consent Calendar Items 5 through 10.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Hedges.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Newsom.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Lorraine.
Yes.
Mayor Diaz Nash.
Yes.
The motion carries 5-0.
Thank you very much. So we're going to move on to public comment. Members of the public wishing to comment on any item not on the agenda may address the City Council at this time. State law prevents Council from taking action on any matter not on the agenda. Your comments may be referred to staff for follow-up. This public comment section is generally limited to a total of 15 minutes, however, that is subject to Council's discretion and can be extended if Council wishes to do so. If needed, an opportunity for additional public comment may also be provided later in the next week. If needed, an opportunity for additional public comment may also be provided later in the agenda. Deputy Clerk, could you please tally the total number of requests to speak on general public comment?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In chambers, I have a total of four requests to speak. In the Zoom environment, I have three, so that'll be a total of seven speakers. And the last speaker will be Connie Weiss.
So that is three minutes each. Thank you.
Three minutes per speaker. So I will call the next three speakers. When I call your name, if you could kindly please line up along the left here, that would be greatly appreciated. The first speaker will be Jen Kilroy, followed by Robert Till and Kendall Katanzaro.
Thank you. Have the opportunity to speak. I was here two weeks ago. Oh, can you hear me now? Sorry. I was here two weeks ago when there was discussion of the downtown San Mateo roads. And I will say, I'm very neutral on it, and so I think I was in a good position to take in the many perspectives. And one thing I think that resonated with me, there were many people here who appeared to move from other countries, probably put their life savings on the line to open up a taqueria or something. And there was a recurring theme that people believed sales are down because of COVID still, which I think none of us would argue. But blocking the street off, I think, takes it to another level. And case in point, there was a gentleman sitting next to me that has Curry Up. I forgot Curry Up existed. And I'm in downtown San Mateo a lot. I like to eat out. But when you don't have that visibility of buzzing through and seeing it, they're disadvantaged. So I'd love for the council to consider a hybrid, I don't know if the discussion's still going on, or some flexibility, because I think those poor devils are seriously disadvantaged. I think of the great little cookie company, Antoine's. If they were in that section, I think they'd be toast. You know, you buzz in, you grab some cookies, you buzz out. So just food for thought. And I know, you know, there were comparisons of Burlingame. I think San Mateo is different. We won't be Burlingame, and Burlingame will never be San Mateo. We have different hearts and souls, and they're great. But I'd hate to see us do away with that, just vast socioeconomic, cultural, everything. So just food for thought. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Robert Till, followed by Kendall and Sandra.
Esteemed members of the San Mateo City Council, today I stand alongside some of my fellow residents in advocating for the establishment of a permanent dog park within our cherished Central Park. While the current dog off-leash area has served its purpose, meeting temporary and seasonal needs for a dedicated off-leash zone, we implore you to consider a more permanent solution. With over 33,000 residents in the surrounding area, the need for a permanent dog park is evident. Many of us reside in apartments and condos without sufficient space for our pets to exercise and socialize, and a permanent dog park in Central Park would provide a much-needed recreation area for the community. We hope to engage in collaboration and dialogue with the city of council and park officials. And as residents who visit the park regularly, often daily, we truly understand the importance of preserving the integrity of Central Park, its natural beauty, and the family atmosphere, also addressing needs for residents and our furry companions. Furthermore, we believe that the inclusion of amenities such as a water station and benches would enhance the overall experience for visitors in the park. So I urge you, esteemed council members, to please consider this proposal and work with us to find a solution that benefits the community. Thank you for your attention to the matter.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be... Thank you. Sorry. Thank you. Thank you. In city council meetings, we do not provide for any cheering, jeering, or clapping. It can put a chill on public comment. We want to create a welcome space where everyone has an opportunity to speak. So thank you for observing those rules of decorum. Our next speaker will be Kendall Katanzaro, followed by Sabrina Langkenau.
Okay. Can you hear me? Oh. Can you... Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So my name is Kendall Katanzaro, and I represent not only the small contingency of people behind me, but 515 people for the city of San Mateo who would like to see, as Robert said, a permanent dog park in Central Park, or anywhere in Central Park, close to Central Park. Two summers ago, we worked very closely with Joanne McGrini to get the dog off-leash area, and since we've had that, it's been incredibly helpful to have our dogs socialize, for us to socialize, because for a very long time, both the dog off-leash area and the field were closed. And unfortunately, dogs need exercise year-round, not just during the summer. And it was extremely difficult to do that based on them both being closed. And the answer we received a lot of was, get in your car and drive. I get it. I totally get it. Yeah, that sounds wonderful, but not everyone is able to do that, or gets off at different times and just wants to go for a walk down into the city after they get off work. According to the, I did some research here, bestneighborhood.org, there's a total of 33,572 people that are in the downtown area, the Aragon-Bearsford area, and the Hayward Park area. I'm forgetting someone. Aragon-Bearsford, downtown Hayward Park, that feed into Central Park. The closest dog parks are on the other side. So there's one at Seal Point, and then there's one at Lori Meadows. That's 33,000 people who literally walk through Central Park or around Central Park all day long that are wanting to do this. I did start a petition. I got, as of this morning, I checked it, 513 signatures from San Mateo residents. These are not people that live in Ohio. These are San Mateo residents. Also, in conjunction with this, I know I have 50 seconds, that I think there's a lot of confusion when the gate to the baseball field's open. Can we use it? Can we not use it? What's the schedule? What's not the schedule? My dog is really big, and my dog needs to run, but I can't go to Seal Point every day. Right? Like, we've all heard it. And the DOLA has been, the Dog Off-Leash Trial Area, has been a wonder, but it's not permanent. And with 6% of the San Mateo population under five years old who want that train, and I get it, I grew up in San Mateo, who want that train, there are more dog owners in that area than under five who could ride the train. Put in the train. That's fine. But we also need a permanent dog park, and it doesn't have to be there. I'm totally open to where you want to put it. But, yes. So that's what I'm here for. I'm happy to send the, I know my time's up, I'm happy to send the petition numbers to someone. I don't have it with me tonight, but I'm happy to email that information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And you should address it to our Deputy City Clerk, Martin McTaggart.
Oh, send it to you?
Yeah.
Got it. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Sabrina Langkenau.
Hello?
Good evening.
Hi, this is my first city council meeting, so thank you for having me.
You came to a good one.
My name is Sabrina Langkenau, but most of the people in this room know me as the mom of Ginny the Golden Doodle. My husband and I moved to San Mateo in 2022, and we've lived in a lot of other Bay Area cities. I won't name names. We had lived here for less than a week before my husband declared San Mateo as his favorite place he'd ever lived. When I asked him to explain this bold proclamation, he told me that it was the beautiful and well-maintained San Mateo Central Park. So there's a well-deserved shout-out to our friends at Parks and Rec. I'll admit, it took me longer to warm up to San Mateo, but this city eventually got me to. It's a familiar trope, but the thing that made San Mateo feel like home to me were the people. This is a community where neighbors care about neighbors. And when I met my neighbors and built those relationships, was taking my dog to the dog park. Second, I fell in love with San Mateo because I felt like this was a community that wanted me. Through the vision that this council has surely played a role in, San Mateo has become an attractive hub for young families. And with more housing on the way, I only see that growing. And while, yes, we millennials love coffee, ramen, and avocado toast, we also really love our dogs. I really understand the challenges of modifying existing plans. It takes courage, and it takes vision. But I firmly believe that by investing in a permanent dog park, this council can continue to build on this admirable track record of fostering a welcoming and dynamic community. We are ready to contribute, bringing community insights and support to the planning process and to ensure the park meets shared goals and expectations. And if you need any more convincing, I invite each one of you to join us one afternoon at the current dog park at around 4:00 PM. There you'll see the joy and community connection fostered by such a space. Truly a glimpse of what a permanent site could provide. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move to our virtual speakers. Our first speaker will be Mary To. Mary, please unmute your mic.
Hello? Can you hear?
Yes, we can.
Awesome. Sorry, I'm not a good speaker either, but I just want to say hello, Mayor Diaz Nash, and our esteemed city council members. I'm here to speak in support of a permanent dog off-leash area in Central Park as well, also known as the DOLA. There is a high density of condos and apartment communities surrounding Central Park, and it is the only accessible park within walking distance for many. There is a morning DOLA, which is wonderful, but for those of us who have to commute to work, it is very difficult to attend. It is important to have somewhere we can easily go to at the end of the day as well. We are lucky we have many dog parks in San Mateo, but after a long day at work and long commute, the last thing I want to do oftentimes is get back into the car and drive to another neighborhood. There is also nowhere in San Mateo quite like the community in downtown, and walking to Central Park often allows the opportunity to get to shop at our local restaurants and businesses we would not have if we were to drive somewhere else. Anyway, back to the dog park. The trial DOLA this past year has not just provided a safe area to let our dogs run, play, and exercise, but has provided an opportunity for us dog owners to also exercise and decompress as well. I did not expect it when I first started taking my dog to the park, but has been a wonderful way to meet our neighbors and build connections with people who would normally be strangers. Oftentimes, I know the name of the dog and not the owner, but through our daily chats, I have been able to learn about their hobbies, their families, their struggles at work, or share struggles we have with our dogs. There are many people in the area with small families or who live alone in the area, so having the opportunity to make a connection, no matter how small or trivial, has made a very large impact. There are many benefits to having a local dog park, and it is a very real need that neighborhood currently has, so I urge you to consider making the dog park a permanent part of our neighborhood. That's all I have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker will be user ending in SMS911U. Please unmute your mic.
Hi, city council and guests. I just want to reiterate the urgency of a need for a dog park in or near Central Park. As you've heard, there's lots of people that would use it. There are many, many more people who are not in attendance, so I strongly urge you guys to consider a dog park near or in Central Park. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And as was announced earlier, our last speaker for general public comment will be Connie Weiss. Connie, please unmute your mic.
Hello? Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great. So I want to add my thank you to the extraordinary job that Patrice has done for the city. She's always shown grace, strength, and leadership in keeping all of us on track. You will be missed, Patrice. And Martin, while Patrice's shoes are hard to fill, you've already shown that you are up to the job, so thank you for taking on this challenging role. And I would just like to add my support for a dog park in Central Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Through the mayor, that concludes public comment.
Thank you very much. Thank you to everyone who came tonight, first time or repeat, and our virtual commenters. We will now close public comment, but we hear you loud and clear. So we're going to move on to the fiscal year 2024-25 Comprehensive Fee Schedule Approval. And Carly Toffey, Senior Management Analyst, and Karen Huang, our Finance Director, are going to make a presentation, I believe.
Good evening, Mayor Diaz Nash and members of the city council. My name's Carly Toffey. I'm the Senior Management Analyst in the Finance Department. The item before you this evening is the public hearing for the annual revisions to the comprehensive fee schedule. Public notice was given on April 3rd and April 6th of this year. Fees are reviewed annually and are usually increased by the Bay Area CPI, which was 2.8% this year. Fees are cost recovery and not to exceed the cost of providing the service. And as a reminder, sewer service fees are not included in the revision process. The changes I've highlighted for you include new fees, fees increased in excess of CPI, reduced fees, and eliminated fees. These changes have been highlighted in further detail in the materials provided. Generally, new fees are for new services or existing services we had not previously charged for, like in the case of some of our new Parks and Recreation fees. I also want to note that many of the changes proposed for public works were the result of a matrix fee study that was conducted this year. Fees that were increased in excess of CPI are usually due to salary schedule increases, such as in the case of the Police Department. And in the case of the wastewater capacity charge, it's a result of a correction to realign with the San Francisco Bay Area CCI, or Construction Cost Index. The only reduced fee we have this year was the wireless permit annual license fee, which was reduced to comply with FCC Order 18-133. And the eliminated fees are usually the result of no longer providing the service, like in the case of the library. And for Parks and Recreation, it was a result of having no available data from the census of 2022. And with that, I'd like to thank you for your time and happy to field any questions you may have. We also have representatives from the departments to help answer those. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Carly. Very, very helpful and important. So I'm going to open it up for public comment.
Through the mayor, I have not received any requests in chambers to speak on this item. If you wish to speak on this item, please deliver a yellow speaker slip to me as soon as you can. If you wish to speak remotely, please raise your hand now. I will give you a moment to do so. Madam Mayor, there are no requests to speak on this item.
All right. Thank you. We'll bring it back to council. Does any of my colleagues have a question or comment? Councilmember Lorraine?
Thank you through the mayor. Thank you for the presentation. I was curious about the wastewater capacity charge increase, because I got a sense from the report that we're changing how we derive changes to it from CPI to this construction cost index. And I think we saw sort of a net increase in a hundred-some-odd thousand dollars, but I guess I was just curious, like maybe in a percentage sense or some idea, especially, I think, given that we've shifted how we calculate it, I guess I was curious about how much, like this year, for example, we're changing it as a result of this shift and any other costs.
Yeah, thank you. That's a great question. So it's actually not a change. We've always been supposed to use the Construction Cost Index for the Bay Area. It was missed in fiscal year 2023 and fiscal year 2024, so the resulting change this year to correct it back to CCI using a retroactive calculation was 18%.
18%?
Yes.
Thank you. No further questions?
Okay. Councilmember Hedges, do you have any?
I really don't have any questions, other than being sad to see the passport service gone. It was so convenient.
Yeah.
It's a great... It's a great service to our community. That's it.
Councilmember Lee, do you have any questions or comments?
I do have a question. You know, and thank you, Carly. It's great to see you here today. And I know this is a very involved effort to align our fee schedule with the capacity, staff capacity, and the cost of our service. And really, we structure this with the intent of achieving cost recovery, while also where it makes sense, providing some subsidies where we have discretion to do so based on our value system, right? And there are certainly areas where we do provide deep subsidies, like for our Park and Rec programs, for example. I wanted to ask, what is the process to do a comprehensive assessment so that the council can better understand where are those deltas in terms of where we are providing more subsidy versus our fee schedule is aligned with the cost of service? What is the timeline for us to actually see that data?
That's a really good question. I would defer to the executive team. If you want to go, Alex.
Good evening, council. Alex Kojikin, City Manager here. So typically, when you really do a comprehensive fee analysis, it's about once every five years. I believe the last time here in San Mateo that was completed was in 2020. So we're right around the corner to look at a comprehensive fee update. And that's where you really look at seeing, and we go through the amount, how much it costs, staff time, for each one of these individual items and the fees that we have. There has to be a nexus to build in exactly how much it costs. But then within there, based off of exactly what Councilmember Lee said, cities, depending on the values of how they feel about different areas, they'll go ahead and say, you know, it's up to council's discretion, it's a policy decision, how much you would want to subsidize any of the fees itself. So like you were saying with Parks and Recreation, you know, there could be, you know, I think we're only at a 40% recovery level right now, but typically you'd see about 50% typically. But that's something that we'll be looking at, and that'll be something that will be coming further over the next year, actually, with this whole timeline, and looking at that further. But yeah, it's typically once every five years where you really do the comprehensive kind of nexus study, drill down to understand exactly the staff hours that go in to the actual fee. But then we have basically the CPI increases, and I believe it was November to November for this last year, which is 2.8%. And that's just a regular annual update as part of the budgeting process.
Right. And so, I mean, so in theory, at least, like we're projecting that we will go through a more like comprehensive, robust fee schedule analysis. And then that will then hopefully be informing our budgeting process, right?
Yeah. So what we'll do is we'll go through user fee analysis, and what'll happen is we'll go ahead and have a request for proposals so that we can get a consultant to do this comprehensive user fee proposal and analysis and work with each of the departments that charge a fee so that we can really understand. Then you get a whole nice, long report in there, and you can really understand exactly how much it really costs. And then going through and presenting that to the council and really seeing exactly what fees are palpable for this council to move forward, for the community to pay.
Thank you. So I mean, I think that there's substantive, you know, conversations to be had when we have more in-depth analysis in front of us. And, you know, and obviously, that will be part of a bigger picture of our budget and budgeting and looking at some of our shortfalls that we're anticipating in TOT and where we need to make up that difference. You know, I will say, you know, while I, you know, one of the things that is of concern to me, and I was raised before, is that, you know, state law is really stripping away some of the broader scoping of our ability to reject housing projects, right? Many projects are, more and more projects are covered under the, you know, the state laws that require us to consider affirmatively further in fair housing. And so while we want to provide the public with their right to appeal and bring community feedback through an appeal system, there's very limited area where we can even contemplate a rejection of a project because of the state laws. And so I'm wondering, like, is there a way, as we look forward, to potentially create a tiered structure for appeals? One fee would be for housing projects that don't have, that aren't subject to AFH law, and another one that does. Because I think that those are some of the fine tuning opportunities that we could implement that, you know, that still upholds the spirit of the law, which is we want to provide community their right to be heard and to provide, you know, meaningful feedback. And also, we don't want to see abuse of these mechanisms, especially in the cases where literally there's almost no meaningful way to oppose a project under state law. So I'm curious, like, is that a policy decision? Is that something that we can, you know, is that within our scope to differentiate those kinds of fees?
Well, I'll make a couple of comments. One, I mean, that's certainly not on the table tonight. There's a different focus tonight. So the council could not take any action in that regard this evening, but...
That's a question.
But yeah, for, in the future, I think this had come up previously where there was a discussion about differentiating between the types of projects. And it would require further research because it would be unusual, I think, to have a different fee structure depending on the type of project, whether it's subject to the Housing Accountability Act or versus another residential project that was of the same size and dimensions, but then maybe is subject to more local discretion, therefore subject to a different fee, which I think is what you're suggesting. That would be unusual or require further research. I'm not aware of other jurisdictions that deal with appeal fees in that way. So it would require more analysis.
Okay, thank you. I think, you know, I think it's worthwhile just to kind of start floating these ideas and conversations. And, you know, specific to this, you know, what's in front of us today, I don't really have any additional questions or thoughts. But I am very much looking forward to the more robust analysis that hopefully will be, you know, very revealing in terms of some of the decision points coming forward.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Carly, for a great presentation. Just one question, and that was, I saw that the only permit fee that's being reduced is the wireless fee. And the wireless people have been very diligent and concerned about the perforation of the extreme number of cell phone towers we've been installing. And, you know, we know that that's within the FCC's purview, not our city's purview. But I was curious, could you tell me what percentage that's being cut? Do you know? I couldn't, sure, it's in here, I just couldn't find.
I don't have that right now, but I'd be happy to email that to you.
That'd be great, thanks. And then second question would probably be a persona question, which is, they're paying this fee when they install a new 5G tower. They have to do that every time they come to reinstall or upgrade a tower? Or is it a one and done fee schedule?
Well, there's different kinds of fees. There's the permit fee to actually submit for the wireless application. There's also a fee if the wireless telecommunications company were to place a facility on a city structure such as a light pole. So I don't know if that answers your question specifically.
Yeah, sure. So right now, I think the new trend is 5G. I don't know if that means the next thing is 6G. But if in two years, they come back, want to put 8G towers, do they need to pull a permit and pay a fee again to replace one for one? Okay.
Yeah. Now, they would need to pull a permit and pay a fee that's associated with that permit in terms of if it was a city light pole, for example, and it was, the project involves swapping out one type of facility for another, that fee for actually locating it on a city structure may not change. But a new permit would still need to be pulled, and a fee associated with that would need to be paid.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Carly. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Carly. I have no questions. So I believe there's, are there any comments that anyone wants to make? Councilmember Lorraine.
I'll just note that I support some of the discussion that's occurred tonight from mainly Councilmember Lee and her questions about, and commentary about looking forward to next year's fee schedule, a deeper dive. We did have a conversation earlier this year in which I think multiple councilmembers indicated some interest in understanding the true cost of some of the service our city is providing behind things like appeals of housing developments that may be protected. And so I look forward to, I just would want to show my support for digging into that a bit when we get to it next time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments before we look at the resolution? No? Okay.
Yes, I would, it's empty. Yes, I would tend to agree with Councilmember Lorraine. It's always good to have the information that we need. And specifically on the last thing you raised, I think it's good to make sure we know what that's costing us.
Thank you. Now, is there a resolution that we are to? Did you want to say anything?
No, I was just going to make a motion. Do I need to just? Okay, I'll take a shot. I make a motion to approve the 2024 to 2029, sorry, I'm reading the wrong one, the 2024-2025 Comprehensive Fee Schedule.
Second.
All right, please take the roll.
Deputy Mayor Newsom?
Yes.
Councilmember Hedges?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Lorraine?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz Nash?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Carly. Thank you for taking us through this. So we're now moving on to the 2024 to 2029 Capital Improvement Plan Preview. And Matt Fabry, our Public Works Director, is going to share it with us.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. Matt Fabry, Public Works Director. And I'm joined up here by our relatively recently appointed business manager, Jamie Perez, who I don't think has been up here before you before. So I'm happy to introduce her. She's the brains of this operation.
Welcome, Jamie. Welcome, welcome.
So I'm going to give you an overview of the 24 to 29 Capital Improvement Plan. This is going to look at both what we've proposed as a more formal 24-25 proposal in terms of capital projects as well as sort of our projected needs for the outer years. And I'll get into the details on that. I do just want to take one moment to thank Jamie and her team and the business group. They've been a huge help on this, as well as we have multiple divisions within Public Works that implement capital improvement projects. And so they've had a heavy level of involvement in this as well as folks from other departments because capital projects, obviously, could be parks projects or other projects in other departments. So going through this process every year is a big process in terms of coming up with what the projects are, developing cost estimates and whatnot. So I appreciate all the work that's gone into it from all the folks that have been involved. And, see, she's the brains of the operation right here. Okay, so we'll start off, actually, I think, I think slides there. I think our slides got out of order. So I'll start with the agenda. We're going to cover just sort of what some of the general funding sources are that we deal with with capital projects. Then I'll give the overview of the 24 to 29, which is going to include both, sort of, as I said, our proposal for projects for 24-25, and then more of a look at the overall needs. And we'll talk a little bit more about what that means. And then we'll close out with a look at some of the challenges we have with regarding to our unfunded projects. So we'll start off with our general fund and Measure S, which is generally our most challenging sets of revenue in terms of not having enough money for the projects that really depend on these funding sources. So on an annual basis, we typically have 4.25 million that's available from the general fund. And then Measure S has been able to contribute annually about $3 million. So on an annual basis, we're looking at 7.25 million that we can handle for capital projects under these two funding sources. We did look closely at existing projects and where we could close out projects that had remaining funds available. And so we were able to free up an additional $2 million for 24-25. So we're working with just under $10 million for 24-25 in terms of capital projects out of these two funding sources. So when we look at, this table will show you for the five-year period. The top row is really what the available funding is. So you can see for the outer years, we're limiting ourselves to the 7.25 million. And then the second row is really what is proposed and what the project needs are. And so for 2024-25, you can see that we have proposed something that's balanced with the available revenue that we have. But you can see for the outer years, we've got a significant problem. We've got significant needs that exceed what's available in terms of the revenue for years two and three, and then less so for years four and five. And that's typical in terms of we've got a lot more certainty in terms of the years that are sooner. And we also have a lot of projects that are sort of urgently needed in the near term. And that's why it's challenging for us to push those out to the future years. So this is showing the exact same thing. It's just showing it graphically, just giving you sort of visual of the magnitude of the challenges. And when we look at this slide, we're looking at what is the difference between funded versus new projects or existing versus new projects? So a funded project is a project that has already received funding in the past and is an established project and is at some level of implementation. New projects are ones that have not received any funding in the past. So we've got roughly $40 million worth of funded projects that are shown here for existing projects, and then about $30 million of projects that were identified as new projects. And then we can look at breaking these projects down into general categories. And so this shows general categories that we were put together for the different types of projects. And as you can see, the second row is really where we've got sort of our challenges. And that's really on the buildings and facility side of things. You can see in years two and three, we've got $25 and $17 million. Those are some significant challenges in terms of those types of projects. We also have a fair amount of Parks and Recreation-type projects that also rely heavily on Measure S and general fund. So just highlighting a few of the projects that we will be, or that are proposed for 24-25, these are sort of the higher dollar amounts for the next fiscal year in terms of just highlighting what would get done if this gets approved. We will continue working on the Marina Library structural improvements that's addressing the challenges with that facility sinking down towards the lagoon. We've got the police station parking deck resurfacing, where we've got some problems with that parking deck. We've got the underground tank replacement at the Corporation Yard that would move from underground fuel tanks to above-ground fuel tanks, which is mandated by regulatory requirements. We are going to be doing a comprehensive citywide facilities condition assessment, We are going to be doing a comprehensive citywide facilities condition assessment, where we'll be looking at all of our facilities, and I'll talk a little bit more about that at the end. We did put money in here in response to, you know, some of the conversations we had earlier tonight on the local roadway safety plan of putting money towards quick-build, safety, mobility-type projects. And we've got sort of ongoing needs in terms of replacing citywide playground equipment. So these are all projects that we've gone through a prioritization process, and we're really focused for next year, given the budgetary limitations that we have, on these are sort of the essential projects in terms of either, these are essential for public health and safety, they're essential for maintaining a facility in terms of, you know, keeping a facility viable or open. These are ones that are already funded projects, that we've already made investments in, that don't make sense to quit partway through. And we've looked at opportunities for can we phase projects and only do, you know, a small phase now and do more of it later. So we've really tried to focus in on sort of the really high priority projects for the next fiscal year. I want to highlight some of the challenges that we have in terms of what's leading to some of these budget deficits in the outer years. One of them is we've got some significant challenges at the Second and El Camino Garage downtown. This is something that shows up in year two. It's part of that 25 million of buildings and facilities. It's 18 million out of that 25 million. So we've got some challenges with structural issues at that facility. We've got problems with weatherproofing, security and signage issues, and pedestrian safety needs associated with that garage. So I want to highlight this one because it's a significant problem, and we've got consultants on board that are looking at this project actively. And it's at the point where we're starting to ask questions about whether it's viable to continue to keep this garage open. And obviously, we don't have, with the budgetary restrictions that I mentioned, we don't have $18 million to put towards this project. And so this is one where we're going to have to be looking really hard at what the options are. We're going to be analyzing sort of the parking utilization on this facility to understand what it would mean if this facility had to be closed down. But I just do want to make it clear, this is a serious problem at this garage, and that we're going to be looking at it closely and coming back to council probably in the near term in terms of recommendations of where we go forward on this project. Other projects, we've got the city council chambers here that has needs for audiovisual improvements and acoustical treatments. The challenge with a lot of projects like this is that when you touch something, it triggers ADA requirement improvements. And so that's the problem with the city council chambers, is that we'd have to do some significant ADA improvements associated with that, and that's why the dollar amount is so high. We've got facility roof replacements at multiple facilities. We did do a facility roof assessment recently, and that's what's led to a lot of the need for replacing roofs and upgrading roofs at a lot of facilities. So comprehensively, that, you know, adds another five, nearly $6 million of needs. And then we've got problems at other garages. This is a picture showing the lower level of the main library garage, where we've got water intrusion into the, through the concrete. We have similar issues with waterproofing and painting needs at our multiple garages, and those add up to, you know, millions of dollars of needs on those projects as well. So moving now from Measure S and general fund, we'll move into our special revenue funds. These are what we consider restricted funds, and I'm going to focus first on transportation funds. So we've got a number of sources of funding that provide funding for transportation projects. We've got gas tax that's listed there as gas tax, as well as the road maintenance rehabilitation account at the bottom is also a gas tax. We've got two sales taxes that are Measure A and Measure W, and then Measure M is a vehicle license fee. So we get various amounts of revenue from those on an annual basis. We have about $8.3 million that comes in that can go towards our transportation projects. Similarly, we looked closely at this in terms of where could we close out existing projects and free up money that was tied to those projects that's no longer needed. And we've got about $11 million that we could work with for 24-25. So this is looking at, again, what we've put forward. So it's looking at 24-25 proposed, as well as what we're projecting for the needs for 25-26. We've tried to balance this with these restricted funds with, you know, the outer years, so you can see that we're staying within what's available. I will highlight that we have challenges with our transportation side of things in terms of, council has made a commitment to significantly improving our roadway condition, and we've put a lot of money into our Smooth Streets program and bringing up our pavement condition index and fixing failed streets. And so when we look at sort of what it takes to continue maintaining our pavement condition going forward, it eats up a big chunk of our $8.3 million. And so that's where, from a historical perspective for transportation, we have historically relied on general fund and Measure S to help fund transportation projects. And so I think I've got another slide here that will show that in a minute here. So without getting ongoing contributions from those, it makes it very difficult for us to do anything beyond just maintaining our pavement condition if that continues to be the priority. And obviously, we've invested and hate to see those investments go to waste. So that's a challenge that we have. So this looks at sort of the categories of projects. As you can see there, the streets one is really what I'm talking about in terms of the significant amount that goes into just maintaining our pavement condition. But we do have projects related to bike pedestrian projects and bridges and some of our traffic signal type improvement projects. So now we're going to step back out and look at the overall everything, and there are two other restricted funds that I want to mention in here that we don't have special slides on, but we've got our sewer revenues that come in from the sewer rates that property owners pay, and that's sort of the middle row there under sewer. And you can see some significant dollar amounts under those, and that's primarily for the first two years is closing out our clean water program, which is our 10-year, $1 billion investment in the sewer system. And then the outer years is when we get beyond the clean water program, but we still have sewer improvements that need to happen, whether it's in our collection system or continuing to make improvements on our older section of the wastewater treatment plant that will remain even after we have the new liquids processing side constructed. And so this, and the other restricted one is the stormwater, and that's based on the new community flood and storm protection fee that the property owners recently approved. So I did mention in the AR on this that we aren't proposing significant capital projects for the stormwater fee just yet. We do expect that of the $4 million coming in, that we're looking at trying to allocate potentially $3.5 million annually towards capital projects, but we're in the middle of getting a contract in place with a consultant to update the storm drain master plan, and a big part of that is going to be coming up with a prioritized list of what we should do and when we should do it and in what order. And so we thought it best to hold off on that, and we'll continue accumulating revenue and then come back to the council with a better, more formulated proposal on how we do stormwater CIP, probably, you know, next year when we go through the budget process. So this just gives you a sense of the overall annual amount that we'd be looking at for 24-25. It's $63 million with the bulk of that being on the sewer side of things. We have similar amounts going forward, but a lot of those go well beyond what's available in terms of our Measure S and general fund abilities to pay for. This just shows sort of the cumulative of what we've shown for needs is $269 million. You can see the percentages of where the bulk of that is. Like I said, it's mostly sewer, but then the next number two category is buildings and facilities. And that's where we've just got real challenges with aging infrastructure in our facilities, and these projects rely on general funds and to be able to do improvements. Okay. Yeah, so this slide looks at some of our unfunded projects. So we've got projects that we've identified costs for, and that these are projects that have not sort of made it forward into an approved capital program. And so this totals $324 million, and this will increase as the five-year CIP gets further developed and prioritized. As I mentioned, we're going to have to go through and make some hard decisions as to how do we get those outer years into something that matches the available revenue. And so everything that we pull off of that list is then going to get added to the unfunded list. So 324 is where we're at now, and it's going to go up as we move some of those things off. So just highlighting some of the priority unfunded projects, we've got the ongoing needs at Central Park in terms of fulfilling that master plan. There's always been a placeholder for, we have it listed here incorrectly as a, I think, a Central Park parking garage, but I think it's been a new downtown parking garage that has always been sort of a placeholder in the fifth year in the CIP that, looking at current costs on that, is $32 million. We do also have an aging courtyard that needs improvements out there. So those just highlight some of the unfunded projects. And as I mentioned, we will be doing a comprehensive facilities assessment, so we expect that we may see increased needs on our facilities side of things as well. And then before I cover this slide, I just wanted to mention also that we are going to be doing an organizational assessment in our department on how we deliver capital improvement projects, just to make sure that we are doing everything we can to be as effective and efficient as possible and getting projects done and out the door and make sure we're not sitting on funds for longer than we need to, to make sure that we're able to continue our capacity. And we did just want to highlight this for the council, that most of our Public Works engineering staff are actually in the building next door, which is leased space, and our lease ends March of next year, and we're spending, you know, upwards of $500,000 annually on that facility. So I think it's something we'll be looking at in terms of the future of, you know, do we continue spending that, or can we potentially save money that could then help provide more capacity for doing capital projects if we aren't paying that? But obviously, if we have to move people somewhere else where we're paying a lease, we won't save all of that. But it could also become a new capital project as well, as if we do have a different space that we had put staff, we may have tenant improvement needs to provide, you know, upgrade for office space and things like that. So that is something that we'll be looking at. Just wanted to put it on the council's radar. And I think with that, that ends my presentation. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Excellent. May not be the happiest news in the world, but it's good news, and we appreciate understanding realities and data, so thank you very much. So who would like to start? Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. My mistake, my mistake. We need to go to public comment first.
Yes, Madam Mayor. If you wish to speak on this item, and you're attending via Zoom or in person, now is the time to speak. This is item number 12, 2024-29 Capital Improvement Plan Preview. And Madam Mayor, I have no request to speak on this item.
All right, then we will close public comment. And Councilmember Hedges, would you like to speak?
Now that I'm fully depressed, we'll go forward. Just a few questions. I think it was an excellent report. Whether it's depressing or not, it's still very comprehensive. Thank you. Question about the Shoreview Parkside Library over on the east side. I'm trying to put together my memory. I think we got fairly significant funding that was brought in by Kevin Mullin when he was in the state assembly. Is that included in the amount of money in the budget?
Could you repeat? This is the Shoreview Recreation Facility?
No, this is the Marina Library.
Marina Library.
Oh, Marina Library, yes. We do have grant funds that are in there, and that's included in the budget for that project.
It was a little bit north of a million, wasn't it?
1.8 million.
Yeah. Pardon me?
That's not more than a million.
Yeah, that's, that's well on the way to the North Country. So did we get federal money on that in any way?
If you'll hold on one second, I think I can find it here.
We did.
State Library, I think. I don't know if it's federal. I think it was State Library.
We got, we got some federal money too.
So that's good news. I'm feeling better. Okay, so the garage downtown, this is kind of personal. I park there all the time. So is it safe?
At this point, it's safe, yeah. But we're looking closely at it. We've had, you know, issues with, with things continuing to deteriorate, so we've got folks that are out there actually this week looking at it and looking at it closely. And if we feel that there's any concerns about safety, then we would take proactive action to shut that down right away if it was not considered safe. But at this point, we've not heard that from the folks that are looking at it.
Okay, the other question I have on Measure S funding, very intricately involved in that, and we made a lot of promises. And one of them was pretty much from the city, that we were going to end failed streets, I think it was by 2026. And just as a personal preference, we're just starting on the east side where my district is, and I'm hopeful that that money is not going to disappear.
No, I mean, we're planning on finishing out the Smooth Streets program, so nothing has changed with that. And then, you know, we have our ongoing pavement maintenance program, so we've, you know, we've got the identified streets that have had failure issues, and those will be fixed as part of the Smooth Streets program. And then we've got ongoing maintenance to maintain our pavement condition going on, you know, separately and in conjunction with that. So the failed streets will get fixed, and then we'll continue maintaining through our pavement maintenance program beyond that.
Thank you. I really appreciate that. I'm going to have some questions in the future, I think, but right now, I'm going to let it sit. You did a great job on this.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Lorraine?
Thank you, through the mayor. Thank you, folks, for your presentation. So I, you know, given that we have, you know, one large line item in the form of the Second and El Camino Real parking garage that needs some rehabilitation, and I saw later in the presentation that another longer-term project on the list is a new downtown parking garage somewhere in the area of $30 million. Given that we now have a new garage at Kiku Crossing, and again, the downtown area plan update appears to be on the horizon, and that plan update is getting more and more resonant. Could we talk a moment, could you please share, what you could, about what staff sees as the next opportunity for us to review parking assets and needs, I guess, maybe specifically in the downtown with regard to these, these two projects, and whether they, you know, are still at the same priority level perhaps as they were before?
I can start off, and maybe city manager may have comments to add, but I think we are going to be trying to do some counts in the near term to see sort of what our utilization rate is. I think the, the challenge between Second and El Camino and the new Kiku garage is that they're sort of on opposite ends. If downtown is about as far away from each other as they can be in downtown for our parking garages, and so, and I don't, that garage just opened up, so I don't think that we're seeing full utilization of that yet, because I don't think people fully know it's available. But we will be doing counts to figure out what our needs are, and I think that that can give us a better sense, at least having some data on how much things are being utilized to know, you know, what our options are. It's going to be challenging, I think, without having probably full data on Kiku yet to bring that into the process. But then maybe I'll see if, I don't know if the city manager has anything he wants to add on any of that.
I think our Public Works Director hit it spot on. We'll be looking at an overall assessment of our downtown parking inventory. That's something that we'll be looking at over the next year. Now, when we really look at holistically and with this downtown plan, that's an exciting piece of planning work on the horizon. And so parking will be a major element of all that that we'll need to look at long-term. But in the foreseeable future, in the near future, really knowing exactly the number of spots and also just the usage, and just knowing exactly the peak times and the, you know, low times in the parking system to really understand in the periphery, specifically on Second and El Camino, this parking garage, it's of concern knowing that might have to go offline in the near future. And so we already are looking at specifically that garage, understanding the parking counts and also the parking counts in the vicinity. Even if the council wanted to move forward with an $18 million project to fix the structure, that means that parking garage is going to go down for nine to 12 months. So we have to figure out exactly where exactly that parking then is absorbed throughout our downtown network. So I think you bring up a great point, Councilmember Lorraine, looking at, you know, hey, you see another garage on the list? How does that work with if we had to take down this garage for a period of time or thinking about the possibilities? That garage has been there since 1948, I believe. So when you really think about the style of cars that were parking in there previously, when it first opened up to what we are today, it's pretty different.
Thank you. I also just wanted to ask a little bit more about bike pad projects and how they might fit in this broader look. Council did agree on a priority to do what it could do, complete all high and medium priority projects in the Bicycle Master Plan 2020 update. But I don't think we've had an opportunity to place those within this unfunded liability. So I guess I'm curious as to when that might happen or what, how that might occur.
I think some, some of the projects are probably in there already, and we could look at the list. But I think, you know, the bigger picture reality of the challenge that I mentioned is that the bulk of our transportation dedicated revenue that comes in gets tied up in our pavement maintenance efforts. And so we do have, you know, historically, we've had a few million beyond that that we could work with, with Measure S and general fund that we could put towards other types of transportation projects. And then we are pretty successful at getting grant funds, and so I think we would continue to pursue that. But I think it ties to the conversation that the council had earlier this evening about Vision Zero and setting aggressive timelines on achieving that. And that's, I think, the reality that we see of the challenge with aggressive timelines is that a big part of making some of those safety improvements really is some of the infrastructure projects, and that's where we just don't feel that we have the existing revenue capacity to move on things as quickly as any of us would like to. And that's, that's the challenge. And so I think it's going to be a struggle that we collectively are going to have to wrestle with. You know, Public Works and the city manager's office will make, have to make some hard decisions in terms of what we propose for the five-year CIP that will come to council. But you've seen the significance of our facilities' needs, and so without resolving those in some other fashion, I think that we're going to continue to have a heavy demand on our discretionary funds of Measure S and general fund that can go towards addressing some of those issues that will be competing directly with our ability to fund some of the bike pad type projects. But we did, you know, try to move things forward and put in the half a million dollars that wasn't there previously. move things forward and put in the half a million dollars that wasn't there previously for the quick build stuff. And I think that's part of what we can look at as well is that, you know, some of the projects that we build are significant corridor projects that cost a lot of money and take a lot of time, but they're significant projects with significant benefits. But there is a lot that we can do that's more of the quick build, low cost stuff and that half a million dollars can actually go pretty far in terms of what you can accomplish if it's just paint and delineators and things like that. So our hope is that with those that we can get a lot more small scale stuff done quicker while we're at the same time trying to pursue some of the bigger corridor projects through grant funds and things like that.
Sure. And I don't mean to take anything away from, you know, our accomplishments today, the, the, you know, staff's work in finding funding for quick build projects and, and looking to increase our safety with the ongoing plans and, and more. But, but isn't it fair to say, like, I guess, I guess my, my question really is, like, would we not consider other projects that we may not necessarily have the funding for at this moment to, to be unfunded projects in the CIP to go along with things such as what we saw?
Yeah, that, that's a good point. So talking with staff, one of the, the things that we're going to be working on this next fiscal year is actually programming out all those projects. And so I think we will end up having, we don't have it right now, but we will have a list that would allow us then to put all those projects on a schedule. And then I think we could come back to council to say that, you know, here's our proposed funding list, as well as here's our sort of unfunded list when it comes to transportation related projects.
Okay, thank you. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Lee.
Thank you. I, I really am glad to see this, this item come forward. And I, I want to give some kudos where I think it's due that, you know, in, we're, we're scraping the bone in some ways. And we've in, have a history of, you know, I think deprioritizing some of our big ticket infrastructure needs for a very long time. And under our new leadership, we, you know, we're, we're finding ways to complete projects and deliver an additional $2 million to do so. So I really appreciate your leadership, Alex, on that and, and yours as well, Matt, to, to make sure that we're, we're checking some boxes where we can and getting those things moved to the other side of the ledger. And I guess, you know, I want to kind of zoom out a little bit in our, in this conversation because it, it seems to me that, that there's, there's a real moment here. This is actually a really key opportunity for this council to think about a comprehensive need assessment and, and how we can treat each decision point with the utmost vision and really an, an analysis of like, what is, what is the highest and best use of our very limited resources and our very limited land opportunities? And, and so, you know, I see, you know, as I'm, as I'm tallying the numbers, like, for example, you know, at one point, it made a lot of sense to spend over half a million dollars a year in rent to, to get Public Works folks, you know, a great office space. Now, with hybrid solutions as the standard, you know, that, that is probably not warranted. We've seen a dip in the, you know, in market for commercial and new commercial office buildings coming, coming online, you know, at a lot, a lot lower prices than, you know, ever before. And, and we just adopted a general plan policy that includes land acquisition, one of my priorities. So, you know, if you look at, like, I mean, how many years were we renting O'Farrell?
It's a 10-year deal.
I don't know the answer on that. Folks that have been around longer than me might know, but it's, it's, I think it's been about that long.
Yeah.
I know that this, this round of the lease is 10 years.
Okay, so, I mean, these things add up, right? These costs add up to really big dollar amounts. And, and then when you weigh that, those investments against other key priorities, like the need for affordable housing or the need to have a, a new city hall, you know, one of, one of the, one of the, the visions of councils for multiple generations of councils has been, how do we bring city hall back to downtown, right? There are, you know, I want to remind this council who, you know, who hasn't, wasn't there for the conversation when we were there, asking ourselves, what are we going to do with these two surface parking lots, right, downtown? What do we do with our city-owned land? And what is the real opportunity here? And so I, I want to ask, you know, I kind of want to ask yourself, Matt, and also our City Manager, like, if, if council's desire was to have a bigger kind of conversation about, you know, not, you know, what, what do we want to do and what are the trade-offs? And is there some new direction that we can take so that we're not just defining for, you know, the next, you know, 50 years that, that the, that the Second, Second Avenue and El Camino garage is going to be a garage? Because maybe it doesn't have to be a garage. Maybe it should be something else, right? Those are the kinds of, those are the kinds of vision questions, I think, that would be really exciting for this council to, to tackle. And I'm, I'm legitimately asking because I, I want to make sure that we're creating space for that line of questioning to happen and that level of analysis to happen. So help me out here. Where, where do you see that coming in to play if it is the council's desire?
So right now, in talking with staff earlier today, we're, we're on a path right now to work towards an $18 million fix of that garage, understanding we don't have the $18 million to fix the garage. Having, you know, we were going to have a study session just to talk about the future of, or just to talk about that fix, so to speak. That could also turn into a bigger conversation of what is the council's vision for that, for that garage or for that parcel in the future?
Well, I, I think, you know, I would be interested to hear from, from my council if there's, if there's desire to have a more robust and expansive conversation so that we're not locked into a study session of, you know, $18 million or no, right? Do we, do we do it or no? Like, maybe there's a better, there's a better question that we should be asking ourselves, which is, you know, which is, what, what is the best, you know, what is the best use of that land? And what is the opportunity? So I'm curious to hear from my council if there's desire to, to expand the scope of the study session.
I guess I would, I would say for myself that I would assume that would be part of the discussion, that you never just say, we're going to spend $18 million. Do you like this garage or not? But, but that, yes, we do need to talk about alternatives, but that it needs to be part of the overall plan. So I would imagine that what we're doing tonight is looking at what we, how do we, do we feel comfortable about the recommendations made for 24, 25? And then, when we start talking about other things, that's the opportunity to do as you're saying. But that would be part of, am I putting words in your mouth, City Manager?
No, absolutely. We'll look holistically, just because that is doing good public policy, you gotta really give alternatives. So one of the alternatives would be is, you know, what, what would you want to do instead at this parcel? And understanding that we have a big, 18 million is a lot that we, that we do not have. I think it would be good to have a discussion just about what does the future lie amongst everything. And so we can lay out the options for the council, if the council so wishes. I'm seeing, I'm seeing nodding heads. I got, okay, I see a majority of nodding heads. So we'll, we can bring back an item in the summer or probably by September at the latest.
About the city hall at Second and, and El Camino?
That, that could be an alternative to actually discuss, but that's thinking big picture, you know, and thinking, thinking about.
And I think, I think that that's, you know, there's, there's, there's a study session about the, the parking structure, right? That's a, that's a, as a study session that is already being planned for, right? I think there's, there's also the big picture, other big picture questions that we might want to do some deeper analysis on in terms of trade-offs, in terms of leveraging new policies that didn't exist before, like land acquisition for city amenities, right? Those are all new tools, policy tools that didn't, literally did not exist up until, you know, last month. So, so, you know, the, the, the market conditions, the, you know, the, the workforce practices, there's a lot that has changed that, you know, that I hope we can consider in, in these conversations, big picture conversations. And I guess that's maybe the second follow-up question that I have is like, where do you see that, that bigger picture analysis slating in? Like, does it make sense to do, you know, to do an assessment of, you know, acquisition opportunities as well, right? So that we can think more strategically about city hall. Like, we've been talking to the county about doing land swaps, right? In, you know, an analysis of how do we consolidate, how do we consolidate the corp yard and, and other kind of public work spaces? There's a lot of, there's a lot of pieces that, you know, that have been part of sort of, you know, conversations and potential solutions that haven't really found a home or come together, that have been operating sort of outside of the, the current scoping of solutions and process. And so I'm, you know, these are the times where we say, this is what leadership calls for. Do we want to, you know, do we want to create a new, more dedicated space for deeper analysis around big picture questions in terms of land opportunity and aligning CIP?
So, under, understanding, you know, as I'm eight months into this position and what will take place, and I, I've worked in real property and previously, and working in all my cities. And so the first piece is going to be actually doing a really good inventory assessment of our real property portfolio, if the council wants to go in that direction, and really understand all the different pieces of property that we do own, and really understanding, just kind of having a bigger approach and kind of vision, like what you're talking about in terms of administering that portfolio and taking care of that portfolio. I always look at real property as another piece of, when we talk about economic development and economic vitality, you have to look at your real property assets as well. It's like anyone at home or resident, you know, if they're a property owner, how that works out and how best, how best to maneuver and utilize and leverage that portfolio at the same time. And so I think that's a bigger conversation. At this point in time, what we're looking at as part of the budget is I'm looking at building capacity within the organization to look at our real property portfolio. And, because we have a lot of real property, we have leases, we have properties. And so we gotta manage those effectively and efficiently at the same time. So that's something we would look at. But then even broader picture, if the council's desire is to look at, you know, more broadly, our property in the future and the vision, I'm happy to look into that. But we have to have the, the appropriate, appropriate staffing capacity. Right now, at a minimum, I'm just really trying to look at the facility assessment that we're looking at. It's a $600,000 price tag that was as part of the presentation because we need to understand what the needs are of our current facilities. But also, you know, if the council desires, I'm happy to do a bigger, you know, bigger vision and looking at the future and how our real property is being utilized and thinking about the future.
Yeah. And I'll just, I, I mean, I, I appreciate the point about how, you know, needing to, needing to get our house in order. The whole, the question that we are, you know, the question of tonight is, you know, what are our needs in, in terms of our, just getting to baseline of maintenance, right? But at a certain point, if we are only thinking about budgeting according to what we are currently maintain, you know, what, what our current assets are as they're defined and what the, what the monetary requirements will be to maintain those things, we're leaving off the, the other part of the potential question and solution and potentially setting ourselves up to throw good money after bad. And that's what I want to, you know, I want to interrupt that kind of siloed thinking that, that will, that's financially irresponsible. So, so that's, you know, that's kind of where I'm going with this line of questioning is like, you know, this, this, this conversation, I think, should be happening in parallel, right? It's like, there is a cost of maintenance. Of course, there's a cost of maintenance. How are we going to resource those maintenance, those, those requirements? Then on, in addition to that, there's, you know, is, is this actually solving the problems that, that, that have been defined, right? I mean, I think that there, in some cases, there is a disconnect, right? Where we are, you know, where, how we're set up right now doesn't actually solve some of the needs of the community. And there are better, more efficient ways to use our resources and to, especially to use our land resources that haven't had that level of analysis and consideration. That's, that's the kind of big picture policy work. I think that, you know, that is about, you know, the opportunity to lead in, in this moment, in this generation.
And I, building on what you're saying, I would suggest that the general plan and what comes after the general plan is a great platform to have that discussion because that's the next 20 years. So I think there's, there's lots of opportunity in the near future to do exactly what you're talking about. So.
So I think another opportunity to talk about that bigger grandiose vision, you know, kind of bigger, bigger vision about what we do is probably, probably the general plan implementation study session that we have, because it falls in line with the policy that you were articulating earlier, the new policies that we have for public serving facilities. And so I think that's an opportunity to discuss this further at that time. But appreciate the discussion this evening on this item.
Agreed. Thank you.
All right, then Deputy Mayor Newsom.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Some questions. I've heard that the main library, which is not a very old building, has had some foundation issues. But all I heard was the mention of water intrusion. Is that the same thing we're talking about? Okay. And have we, as a city, gone back and approached the engineers and builders to see if there's any recourse for that building and additionally for the San Mateo Police Department, which are newer buildings that are having severe problems that they shouldn't at the young age of these buildings?
So, under, understanding the question, the first question that we do ask is usually for, you know, defective construction or issues with construction, usually it's a 10-year period. And both buildings, one is 17 years old. And then the police station I know is over 10 years. Chief, how old's that police station? 16 years old. So they're both out of that period where you could go after the, the contractors. But we did actually, I reached out to our former City Manager, Arnie Croce, a couple weeks or about a month ago, because he was leading the charge on building the downtown library. And so he connected me with architecture and the structural engineers for the library. And so staff and I, we met last Friday, actually. And they actually went out to go take a look at it, too. And so they've connected us with, so this was a bigger issue at the time of the development of the library. And so they had to do a lot of work to protect the, the garage underneath. And so we'll be going back to the waterproofing firm and the engineers that worked on this so that they have all the information on that, so that we can piece this all together.
Fantastic. Thank you for that. And let me know, let us know how it goes. I hear Drew in the back of my head, because one of the things Drew told me on his last week before he retired was, don't forget about Fire Station 27. And I didn't see Fire Station 27 even going out five or six years. Is, is, is that on our radar? Because that building probably has a shelf life of another five to eight years before we're going to have to replace it. And if not, that's okay, too. But let's get it on the.
We do have a Fire Station Roof, Fire Station 27 Roof Replacement Project on there that's in year three.
Okay.
I'm not sure if that's what you're referring to, but I think that's the only one we have on there for Fire Station 27.
But noted, we need to go ahead and put it out there at the probably five-year mark to work at that. And I was talking with the fire chief about that, too. So that's, that's a good catch.
And, and there is a potential opportunity to partner with CDF with that facility and take over their facility while building and potentially getting some funding by taking over that contract. So just want to make sure that was on our radar. I was curious about Bay Meadows because I didn't know that there was still another community park project for Bay Meadows. Where, where is that?
And I think that was a bullet that was not supposed to be on our slide that we pulled from the wrong place. And so.
Okay, so we're parked out in, in Bay Meadows.
I think so, yeah.
I thought so. I just, it's like another park. All right.
But we got 20 million in pools.
Okay.
10 for each.
Yep. To echo a lot of what Amaran, Lee has said and others. To echo a lot of what Amaran Lee has said and others as well, you know, I kind of wonder if we, you know, if we're building a parking structure, rebuilding a parking structure at Second El, coming to Real, do we also need Central Park? Or could we just do one of those two, potentially? One of my thoughts, which I've talked to Alex about, but just to put out in public, is, you know, I've heard a lot from Sutter Health that they're very concerned. It'd be interesting to see, I don't know how we can do this or if we can do this, but what percentage of the people during the business day are using that garage from Sutter Health? Because I wonder if we couldn't, to do something in the interim, have them work with commute.org to fund a shuttle, where we could have them parking at Kika Crossing, for example, and shuttle them across town in the morning and afternoon. Commute.org does shuttles like that, as does Laz, which is already a partner of ours.
So I know that staff is meeting in earnest with Sutter Health, because they have parking needs. I know that they're looking at bringing in more services here, as we have an aging population here locally, and so they're looking at expanding. And so, staff is having, are you meeting with them this week?
Next, the week after.
Okay, so we're meeting with them a week after next, so appreciate the comments this evening on that.
Sure. I'm sorry, I realize I'm going into more comments than questions, but, yeah, okay, this is a hybrid time, right? I echo the idea of potentially looking at buying an office building versus, and with hybrid work, do we need as much space as we have? Both those questions I'd like, you know, obviously hear more about as we learn. And, you know, one of the things that I saw a few months ago was, South San Francisco has a brand-new civic campus, and one of the things that I thought was interesting, and I don't think I've seen this anywhere else in the Bay Area, but maybe there is somewhere, is that on their civic campus, they have a large council chamber that's built, that's adjacent to City Hall. And, you know, I wondered, too, if, you know, if we got rid of having, for example, the parking lot in Central Park, if we could do something similar to that, where we have a large meeting space that could be used for council chambers, could also be used for big events, you know? And that's what they're doing in South San Francisco. So, those are just some thoughts and questions that I had.
I appreciate all the big visioning going on this evening, so I'll take note of that.
Thanks.
Excellent. That's fantastic. Well, exactly. Well, quickly, I will just add on. I think, you know, going back to Measure S, I think the important thing, it is a general fund fund, no question about it, but it's very much identified with the streets. So, and there always has to be enough to do that, because number one, that's how it was sold, and number two, you need streets to ride bicycles, you need streets, it's not just for cars. So, I really want to make sure that we're not going to shortchange. I don't ever want to get into a position where we have more failed streets, and I know you don't either. So, very important. Yeah, I was going to ask the question about the Marina Library, so thank you for taking care of that already. And I'm, my question is, are the rec centers sort of Tier Two? I didn't see any of them on the priority list for this year.
In terms of roof replacements?
Just in general, how are they being evaluated? Because we have six rec centers, but they all are in great need.
Yeah, so the way we had been doing things is we've been doing sort of piecemeal assessments, where we're looking at one category, and so that's where we did roof assessments. And I think we, I can't remember if we did HVAC before that, but, so that's where we're going to switch in this next fiscal year. We're going to do a comprehensive assessment of all of our facilities, so we aren't going to just piecemeal it. I think we're going to, you know, do structural and other things after this. So we should have a much more comprehensive picture, but that's why, right now, we have a bunch of roof replacements on our list, and they're not cheap. Some of these rec facility roofs are, like the Beresford roof is complicated roof, but we have significant problems with them. And so I think we bumped up the Central Recreation Center roof replacement, because that one's probably in the worst situation right now for next fiscal year. And then, you know, it was a very tough decision to say we have to push other ones to next fiscal year, but we just didn't have the money to do it. So I think the Beresford and the King Center roofs are also significant concerns. I think the King Center, we want to look at that one more holistically, with some of the other potential improvements that are proposed there for making a resilient center. But I think the Beresford one has got some significant leaking problems, so I think that one needs to get done as soon as we can.
Okay, and I would, to add on to the holistic big picture, when we do start talking about these things, how do we combine functions, so that we don't have a library here and a rec center there? But, and this is not a new idea. I know Sheila Canzian was an advocate of this and James Moore from the library many years ago, but those are two natural combinations. So I think there's lots of appetite on the council for many different areas. Thank you very much for bringing it up initially, Councilmember Lee, and adding on, Deputy Mayor Newsom. So, I think you're good. Okay, Councilmember Lorraine.
Thank you. I'll just briefly join my colleagues in interest in big visioning, and I look forward to next steps and more plans and review to come on that with an eye toward making the best use of our real property and assets. I might have a quick additional comment. I did want to join Councilmember Lee in thanking the city manager and staff for diligence and finding some money from projects that have been closed, and that clearly is key, and I think we'll be feeling even more appreciative as we go into the next item about that. Yeah, I think that's, yes, thank you.
Okay, so I think there's some good general direction for this year, and then an interest amongst everybody in the council to open up.
Thank you so much for the feedback.
As part of the implementation of the general plan. Great, thank you very much, and welcome again. Yes, okay, and we'll take a quick break. Yeah, we're going to take a quick break. Five to seven minutes. Yeah. Well... Okay. Can we get going?
Could we turn down the air conditioning?
Thank you. Yeah, turn down the air.
It's chilly in here.
We do not need air conditioning.
Turn the heat up.
Yeah. Okay, we are moving on to item number 13, General Fund 2425 Operating Budget Preview and General Fund 10-Year Forecast. Karen, over to you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Honorable Mayor and members of the council. Tonight, we are here to present the General Fund Budget Preview for the upcoming fiscal year 2425, and along with that, we are going to present the General Fund 10-Year Forecast for your review. Tonight's agenda is going to focus on the General Fund, which is the city's primary operating fund. We are going to talk about the challenges that we face, and then we'll go right into our budget preview, and then followed by the General Fund 10-Year Forecast. We'll conclude the presentation with our budget strategy and planning, and followed by a session for your questions and feedback. Let's take a quick look at our budget process timeline. The budget was kicked off in January, and on the February 20th council meeting, staff have provided you a mid-year budget updates for the current fiscal year. And here we are in April. Public Works Director Matt Fabi provided you a CIP preview, and I am here to provide you with an operating budget preview for the upcoming fiscal year. And the next step is in June, staff is going to bring back the proposed operating and CIP budget for your review, and the final approval and budget adoption is going to be on the June 17 council meeting. This year's budget is quite challenging. Some of the constant issues that we have to deal with is on the list here. It's not new to us. We have presented this challenge to the council before. As Director Matt Fabi have mentioned, in the CIP review, we constantly have to deal with our maintenance city facilities, funding needs, and also our infrastructure improvement needs. And those are big-ticket items, and we have a huge funding gaps. And on top of that, doing business, it's getting more and more expensive. The rising cost for providing city services, including rising personnel costs, and everything else is more expensive than before, that continue to put pressure on our general fund budget. And not to forget that we still have to fund our long-term legally obligated liability, which is our unfunded pension liability. And making it even more complicated this year is the two major uncertainty we have to face. The first one is the VLF revenue shortfall. I have to call it what it is. It has become a major threat to the city's physical stability. This is a really big concern. If you talk to all the finance director and city managers in the Sematell County, everybody is talking about this VLF shortfall, and what's the impact it may do to the city's finance. So this is what really keep me up at night, and it has been a major concern, and we have to bring this issue to the council to consider. The high-interest rate environment has put pressure on our tax revenues, impacted the housing market, cooling it down, and therefore our property tax growth have slowed down, and also have an impact on our transfer tax. But staff is optimistic about the demand in the region, and we thought once the high-interest rate environment may have a chance to come down, the market will go up and it will adjust itself. So this one... So this one is a concern. It's an uncertainty, but we think this might be a temporary issue. The VLF is really what I really worry about. Let's take a look at our general fund revenue projection for next year. Currently, we are looking at one hundred sixty-six point eight million dollars for next year's revenue estimate. As you can see in the graphic here, the green area is all our tax revenues. The black areas is everything else. So it shows us how heavily the cities rely on tax revenue. The green area actually accounted for eighty percent of the general fund revenues. The biggest piece is our property tax revenue, followed by sales tax, property transfer tax, and TOT hotel tax. Next, we are forecasting the general fund spending is going to be about one hundred seventy-seven point three million for next fiscal year. As you see on the pie chart here, personnel cost is going to be the biggest piece in our general fund expenditures, accounting for nearly seventy percent of our total expenditures. This piece also included our SMC fire service personnel cost, the city's share, and the legacy cost. We included all that into the personnel cost to show you what's the true impact of personnel cost to the city and the percentage. The budget highlight for next year is a slow growing for property tax estimated at three percent. VLF, we are assuming the state is going to backfill the city for our fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three budget VLF shortfall, which is four point two million dollars. If the state end up not paying us the VLF, then our budget deficit is going to go up by four point two. TOT, originally, we are projecting our baseline will come back to seven million dollars at the peak pandemic level by next year. But because of the Sematell Marriott Hotel closure, now we have to adjust the baseline back down to four million dollars only. So it's a three million dollar revenue loss to the city. Another highlight is on the expenditure side. As we mentioned earlier, inflation have continued to put pressure on the city's operating. Everything costs more now. Pension cost is going to rise starting in next fiscal year. This is mainly due to CalPERS missed that investment target and have a negative seven point five percent investment loss in fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. And because of that, our city's unfunded pension liability go up by one hundred million. And that loss need to be amortized over twenty years. And the first year, the additional cost kick in will be next fiscal year. So we'll talk more about the pension costs later. Contribution to CIP, I think I have a typo here. Our baseline contribution is seven point two five. But for next fiscal year, we are actually coming up with close to eight million dollar contribution to our CIP. So overall, putting all the pieces together, we are projecting next fiscal year, we are going to see a budget deficit of ten point five million. I want to add to this is that when we are developing the city's budget, our revenue estimate usually are more conservative. And when we are budgeting for the expenditures, we are asking for the maximum spending authority from the council. So usually on the expenditures, we are asking for the max for the operations. So based on historical, the history is that we always do a little better on the revenue than what we projected. And on the spending side, we will come under the spending authority. So I will assume that our deficit at the end of the year will be less than the ten point five. But when we budget, we have to budget at a higher deficit. So with that, we are going to have to draw down on our rainy day reserve in order to weather this economic cycle. The rainy day reserve is by the name is for rainy day. When a lot of experts say we are not in a recession, our general economy is doing really well, really strong. But internally, for local government, we are experiencing a downturn. We are seeing slowdown. So from a financial officer's standpoint, I see it raining right now. And that's why we are using the rainy day reserve in order to keep our core services, keep our service level, and continue to contribute to the CIP projects. Usually, when we experience discount uncertainty and downturn, the first thing we cut is CIP projects. But because of all the needs that we have, we didn't take this approach. We continue to fund what's the critical projects that we need to do. And I have to thank Public Works team that they really become creative and flexible and willing to work with finance to come up with a plan that we can put up the money for next year, at least balance next year's budget. We know there's a much bigger funding gap, but we have been working together to find money in order to fund next year's projects. With the estimated ninety-nine point four million dollar general fund ending fund balance, it's distributed into four category. First is our operating reserve at twenty-five percent of general funds expenditure. That's forty-one point seven million. And additional one million dollar added to the housing set aside, making it seven million dollars. The eight million dollar committed to CIP mainly is for Measure S, for the money that we committed to CIP but haven't transferred out. So those are earmarked for CIP money that we wanted to distinguish it and make sure that those are not general fund at discretion. So we set them aside. The remaining balance become our rainy day reserve, which is estimated at forty-two point seven million. Oh, with that, before I go into our general fund ten-year forecast, I wonder if you have any questions?
Questions from the council? Councilmember Hedges?
Forgive me if this is a little too far in the field, but there was something happened about five years ago called the wafer decision that required payment of sales tax on online purchases. How is that doing? And because we were dividing it for a while to see how it was doing.
Yes, that piece actually have benefited the city in some way. Online purchasing will now require to pay sales tax. And the tax is coming to mainly to a county pool. So if we are buying online and the sales tax will first gather in the Sematell County pool, then distribute it to the cities. For area that they cannot identify which county, it will go to the state pool and then get distributed to the city for our share. But this is one positive effect on our general fund tax revenue.
What percentage of the sales taxes, do you know?
It's quite small. It has been a small percentage for our sales tax revenue.
Yeah, the way it was structured thing in the decision is the tax goes to the destination of the merchandise. Unlike the 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 sales tax for brick and mortar, which was which goes to the location that the stuff was sold.
Yes.
So through the mayor, I'm hoping that we can just continue through the presentation and then hold the questions for the end.
Yeah, we're getting a little deeper than I intended. I was just trying to get a number, an idea of.
I appreciate it. Those are good questions. Just want to get through the presentation, power through the presentation first.
Okay, we're going into our general fund ten-year forecast. Normally, we will make, staff will make a set of assumptions and provide you one set of general fund ten-year forecast for your review. This year, we did something different because of the uncertainty that the potential outcome is drastically difference. And we want to highlight the impact each one may bring to the city for your consideration. That's why we developed three different scenario for you to consider. The first one is the most optimistic scenario, assuming everything goes well. The second one is the more pessimistic scenario, mainly relating to VLF, how the state is going to backfill the VLF shortfall. And if it didn't go to our favorable revenue situation, what is going to look like? And then followed by a middle ground situation. So let's take a look at the assumption that we make on our ten-year forecast for expenditures. Through all three scenario, we use one expenditures for all three scenario. So even though we have three different scenario for general fund ten-year, they are mainly focused on revenues. On the expenditure side, it's the same projection. And they are building on this assumption, which is salary and expenditures are assuming to go up with the general alignment with historical CPI. Medical expenditures is going to assume at a six point five percent annual growth. Pension cost is going to be based on our CalPERS actual evaluation. Non-personnel cost is assuming to be at four percent compound annual growth for the next two years and then come back down to three percent. Transfer out for CIP is going to stay at seven point two five, which is what our Public Works Director Matt Fabi have mentioned. Four point two five is coming from the main fund and three million dollars is coming from the Measure S. So we are committing to at least contribute the seven point two five baseline. And this is what the expenditure is going to look like. The biggest piece, as we mentioned, is personnel cost. It's at sixty-eight percent of the total general fund expenditure throughout the ten years. And about twenty-seven percent is our non-personnel cost expenditures. The top piece is the purple piece, which is our contribution to CIP. We take this piece out just to show you the vision, how flat this look, knowing cost is going up every single year in order to construction, to do any constructions. And we know this is not realistic, but this is what we currently can afford. We know that the funding is not enough. Now let's take a look at our pension obligation. Pension costs have two key component. One is the normal cost for active employees' one-year current year services. And the second component is unfunded pension payment, which we call it UAL payment, which is represented by the red bars here. As you can see, we are currently, the general funds portion of the citywide unfunded pension UAL is estimated at seventeen point three million at the current fiscal year. In the next seven and eight years, it's going to rise up to estimated twenty-six million, which is about nine million dollars more than what we currently paying. So you see a small increment, two, three million dollars a year for the next couple of years. And when it really pick, it's going to be additional five, four to five million dollars each year until you hit the peak and then you go back down. So it will be quite challenging for the next ten years just in order to pay this liability. Now let's take a look at our general fund revenue assumption. Usually, I start with property tax, but let's save property tax for later and take a look at everything else. Sales tax, we are projecting is going to stay relatively flat with moderate one to two percent increase. Transient occupancy tax, we call it hotel tax. TOT is going to project at four million dollar baseline with really moderate increase. Property transfer tax, it's going to be really go up and downs as it has been, really unpredictable. But for long-term forecast, we are setting it at eight million dollars a year as our baseline. And everything else will experience moderate increases. So here is a graph for our sales tax ten-year forecast. The green bars represent the actuals, the blue represent our mid-year budget estimate for the current fiscal year, and all the purple bars represent our future forecast. So as you can see, sales tax is still growing up. It's just not growing up as fast as we wish it can. And it's actually growing at a pace that is slower than our inflation. Hotel tax, initially, we hope it go back to normal, but now we have to adjust our baseline back down to four million dollars, as we mentioned earlier. Property transfer tax, as you can see from the green bars here, it really go up and downs. And currently, we are projecting the current year will end the fiscal year with only seven million dollars. And for next fiscal year, we are projecting eight million dollars. And all the hour years for the ten-year forecast will stay flat in that way. We know the actual result will come back different than this. But I think this is a really good middle ground number that we can use for our long-term forecast. Now let's take a look at our property tax. Property tax is going to be most unpredictable based on how our housing market go and have a direct relationship with how the interest rate is going to be, how fast and how much the Federal Reserve is going to cut rates. Based on our current estimate, because of the strong job report and the current CPI increases, it's estimated the Federal Reserve is going to wait and see. And it would take a more gentle and gradual approach with their rate cuts. So with the best scenario, the most optimistic scenario that we build here, we are projecting a strong housing market with a year-over-year six percent growth. So this is the best scenario we think it can be. In terms of VLF shortfall, this scenario also projecting the state to do a one hundred percent backfill only with a two-year delay on payment with a two-year gap. The pessimistic scenario is the state will refuse to pay back anything. They just refuse to pay. So we lost all the VLF shortfall. That's the worst-case scenario. And also with that scenario, we are projecting a weaker and slower housing market recovery. The middle ground scenario is that we are going to get some VLF shortfall, but it's going to be at a reduced level. And we are projecting housing market is going to be consistently growing at four percent year-over-year. The reason is that usually in a really bad recession, we at least will get two percent in our property tax growth. And in some good years, we'll get six. So we take the middle, it's at four. And that's the reason why we develop the four percent. So let's take a look at what the VLF revenue mean to us. Usually, our VLF revenue, our entitlement grow with our assessed value. So if our secure property tax grow up four percent, our VLF entitlement also go up at the same amount. And this is a really nice chart to show you how beautiful it is. If we don't have a shortfall issue, we will have a lot of money coming in and it will provide a lot of funding. The reality is that if you look at the blue bar, that's the funding we are projecting that will be available to us. And the orange is going to be the shortfall. Looking at the ten-year forecast, you see at the nine and ten years, the whole thing turns orange. That means we are projecting all the city, all the school district within the Sematell County will turn basic A's at that time. Everybody will become basic A's school districts. And therefore, we lost all our VLF funding resources. And we have to one hundred percent rely on the state to backfill us. So the best scenario is that the state will backfill one hundred percent with a two-year gap. As you can see, instead of a smooth, a smooth line going up, we are going to go through some roller coaster. We will go through some up and downs because of the two-year delay of payment. But it's it's a hundred percent backfill. So that's the best scenario we can we can see for the ten year. So that's the best scenario we can see for the 10-year. And the worst scenario is all the orange, all the shortfall goes away. Let me go back. This is our entitlement. And if all the shortfall are not being backfilled, no funding whatsoever, just disappear. This is what it's going to look like. And just looking at the 10-year forecast, just looking at this one forecasting window, the accumulated revenue loss will be $180 million if this materialize. So if this happened, it will be devastating to the city's financial standing, and we have to do dramatic cut to city service in order to survive. So when I started to develop this scenario, I think whether we should really, really sound the alarm to alert the council about this and how much concern we should put on these issues. And I think because of the state deficits, they are experiencing estimated 30 to 70 billions deficit for next year, and they are still in the process of reviewing the claims the county of Sematell filed on behalf of all the cities and themselves. And as of today, their proposed budget have not include a backfill at all. So the next one is going to be in May. We'll see whether the state will put our VLF backfill into their next-year budget. If that didn't go in, the next following timeline is going to be in September, when they will probably consider budget amendment, whether to include it in or not. So the middle ground scenario is that somehow, somewhere in the middle, we'll come up with a compromise between the state and local, and we'll get some of the VLF revenue, but not 100%, which is at a reduced level. So there's so many uncertainty in that area, I don't have enough data to provide you a most accurate pictures. So in this graph, we are taking a 20% reduction on the VLF entitlement to come up with this middle ground scenario. So with that, we are going to do a quick review on the housing markets currently. This is also another uncertainty that we face. As you can see, our 30-year fixed-rate mortgage averaging at 6.88%, just slightly under 7%. And it kind of pecked toe in that it can't stop rising and pecked toe at this level. So, and that's what the impact on mortgage rate when the Fed keep increasing interest rates. Borrowing has been quite costly, and it's something that not just impact our residential market, but also have an impact on commercial development, has been financing any big development project become more costly. We have seen recent news about medium home sale price have go up recently. It did reflected on this chart here, as you can see in the dark blue bar, which is the latest 2024 Q1 medium sales price for single-family home in Sematell, which is almost go back to $2 million, which is a good sign. But if you look at the green and the yellow, you will see that the number of sale and inventory is still really low, meaning the transaction, the number of the volume is still really slow. So that show weaknesses in our housing market. Now, let's take a look at what the free scenario mean to us. The best scenario is VLF get 100% backfilled by the state and a strong housing market with 6% year-over-year growth. That, on the left-hand side, as you can see, the red line is our total revenue for general fund. We will still experience a couple of years of deficit, but we'll come out of it in the second half of the 10-year forecast. And as you can see on the right-hand side of the blue bars, which is our general fund fund balance projection, the general fund start to go down and then come back up, which is still really good. We are above the 25% operating reserve at all time. The pessimistic scenario, as you can see, if the state refuse to fund our VLF shortfall and the housing market coming back slowly, we do not have money to pay for just the baseline operating budget. We don't have enough to cover the green, not to mention the purple for CIP. So in this scenario, it's really devastating. Although we are currently sitting in, sitting on a lot of our reserve, we have more than 100 millions in our general fund fund balance that can weather us for a period of time. But if this continue, you will see on the right-hand side, we'll go into the red pretty soon. So in that scenario, we will start have to take action. I show it on the chart to show you going negative, but in reality, we cannot go negative. So it means that this action has to be take. The middle ground scenario, as you can see here, we are projecting some sort of reduced level on the VLF revenue, but we will get something. And the housing market will be at 4% year-over-year growth. Let's pay attention to the red line again. It's just right above the green, which means in this scenario, our general fund revenue will be enough to pay for the baseline operating costs, but not enough to pay for the purple, which is our contribution to our CIP projects. And our general fund fund balance is going to drop because we keep drawing down on it. If we have to pay for our operating and also committed to pay for the 7.25 annual contribution to CIP, then we have to keep drawing on our general fund in order to do that. And in this forecast, we'll see our general fund fund balance will drop below the 25% operating reserve to approximately only 15% at the end of the 10-year forecast. Although I have to say, the 10-year forecast is a forecast, we don't know what we don't know. So we can base on what we know now to forecast the next five years, which we have more confidence that what it might look, but more than 10 years, we really don't know. And that is just, wanted to emphasize, this general fund 10-year forecast is a tool to show us the chain to help us to facilitate the discussion about our direction, where the long-term might look like. And this free scenario hopefully will give the council a picture of the impact of the VLF shortfall. And that's why it's really important for the city to keep fighting for our local money, keep working with our county and all the other city in the Sematell County in order to advocate for the local money to come back to local and ask the state to fulfill their obligation to pay for this VLF shortfall. Because if they don't, the impact to the city is huge. With that, with the VLF shortfall and high interest rate and its impact on housing market with this two big uncertainty, we will continue to assume the some weaknesses in our general fund revenue until this two-issue resolve. And so short-term, just pulling municipal finance textbook measure, when we are going through downturn, we use, we'll use our rainy day reserve to weather through the cycle. Actually, I think back in great recession, the city of Sematell have really small reserve. And it forced the city to do immediate cut in order to balance the budget. But we are in a different situation now. Thanks to past and current councils' leadership, we have been exercising budget discipline and build up a really decent size of reserve that can buy us time to wait until some of these uncertainties clear itself, maybe in the next couple of months or in a year, and also give us time to plan for other action that we can take now in order to address some of the concerns. But long-term, we do need to find funding need, to address this funding need for operating and CIPs. Some measurable actions that we can consider is optimizing our cost recovery, that I think our city manager mentioned, we can take a look at our user fees and do a comprehensive study and see if our fee structure set up properly to recover costs for some of our services. And also, we wanted to use special and restricted fund first before we tap into general fund if possible, looking for grant funding opportunity and also consider potential revenue measure to enhance our revenue. If it become needed, we do have to consider citywide financial sustainability plan where we might have to consider cuts and some other measures in order to balance the budget. Another item that I want to bring to the council for your consideration is that we know the city have been setting aside money for our housing set aside in order to pay for affordable housing. We also have a 25% reserve for operating. We might have to take a look at our reserve policy in order to prioritize which reserve get funding first, and how much we should set aside, and how much is enough in order to give us the flexibility to address all these certainties that we have to face in the next couple of years. So staff is working on developing this comprehensive reserve policy, at least reviewing it now, and in the hope that we will bring back a reserve policy for your consideration in early 2025. So here, it conclude my presentation for tonight, and we have a question for the council. In terms of all the scenario we present to you tonight, staff is recommending to take the middle-ground scenario approach for our long-term general fund forecast and long-range planning. We would like to ask for your input and feedback on your approach that you think is appropriate for the city.
Thank you, thank you very much, Karen. Now, time for public comment.
Yes, this is item number 13. If you wish to speak on this item, please raise your hand now. Madam Mayor, I have one request to speak. So we'll set the time at three minutes, and our speaker will be Mason Fong. Mason, please unmute your mic.
Good evening, council. I just have a few things to give you insight. So when I was on council in Sunnyvale, we actually have a 20-year budget, and the reserve is only 15% for the first two years and is tied to CPI for the rest of the year. So the first issue I see with Samateo's budget is that the reserve policy is 25%. That seems way too high for me in a city where you have to deal consistently with the VLF ERAF issue. And so I think that is a policy change that needs to be changed, as I saw it in the staff memo, is a council policy up to your discretion. It's a one require charter amendment. The second issue I see is that the city, I think, has $700 million in cash reserves that are invested in long-term assets that probably aren't keeping up with inflation. And so I sent over an email to council late tonight, just to iterate that I actually think it's a smarter policy to invest those funds into your public works, into your CIP projects, to save money over time. Because as you know, if you let things go, the labor cost goes up, the construction cost goes up, and you lose out. The third thing is that I think there's a lot of different policies that I mentioned in my emails, where you can make money off the water that you have, that's excess water in making a water deal. You can do things like a point-of-sale tax whenever you have a development agreement to make sure the sales tax from those construction materials go to you instead of the county. But most of all, I want to flag pension obligation bonds. It's a very controversial topic, it requires a lot of research, but luckily, San Jose did most of that research for you in 2021. And so since Samateo, Samateo County, Napa County are such special areas with this issue that is structural deficits due to the pension reform that happened so long ago, I really think you need to look at pension obligation bonds, so that you basically borrow now, pay off a lot of the stuff that's infrastructure, like the fire station, like the garage, like the street maintenance, like the PCI, in order to save later on costs. And so if you look at the report I sent you via email, there's a whole study session from 2021. They have charts in that 100-page document that show which cities across the nation have used pension obligation bonds and how successful they have been at beating inflation. And so that's a way for you to make money and reinvest right now, rather than having to talk about, is it $18 million, zero, or somewhere in between. So with that, happy to always connect offline on these ideas. I wish you the best of luck, thank you.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, that concludes public comment.
Thank you very much. Let's close public comment, and thank you, Mr. Fong, for your input. I'm sure that staff will take it under consideration and take a look at your email as well. So bringing it back to council, who would like to start? Councilmember Hedges?
I would like to ask the city manager, based on Mr. Fong's comments, what he thinks about lowering the reserve requirement as a way to fund some of these projects.
So I think that is one of the options that was in the presentation this evening for future consideration. When you look at lowering a reserve policy, what it does is it'll free up cash upfront and assist, you know, for the first couple of years, but you have to understand that our costs of services keep going up. So it only helps you really at the beginning. But when you look at a reserve policy with our budget, I'd say, Karen, is it probably, even if you were to free up, say, 5%, go from 25% to 20%, that's probably freeing up about $7, $8 million annually, probably, which is significant. It's one, you know, if you're looking at a multi-pronged approach to really help look at just the fiscal sustainability, you know, it could be one approach to look at. And we had our city managers meeting last week, just with all the city managers of Samateo County, and they brought up the, but, you know, everyone's in the same, similar boat. And I know that South San Francisco right now is currently looking at their reserve policy, specifically dropping it from, they're at 20% right now, maybe all the way down to 17%. So this is stuff that is going on, and, you know, because ultimately, you'd have to look at a revenue measure as a last resort. And so really, you want to look at cost efficiencies internally and also just how we are delivering services and reimagine, that's something that we're looking at internally. But with the strong financial position that this council and previous councils have put this city in, allows us some time, like the finance director mentioned, to really talk about all these different ways of looking at how we can effectively move forward. I also am a firm believer that, you know, there's economic cycles, this is a history of, you know, this is how things are. And so right now, we're feeling the impact right now with the high interest rates and with development kind of freezing currently, but hopefully in the next 10 years. And that's the hard part, is like the first five, you kind of have a sense, can kind of get there, but when you look at that back five on a 10-year forecast, it's really, you're guessing, but you kind of really trying to pace yourself there. But there are major threats on the horizon. And so I guess going to your question, yes, I'm sorry, I went in a roundabout way of kind of answering, you know, that five.
I get around the barrel too, man.
Okay, well, there you go.
So I want to continue on, so, because I need to ask a question before I make a decision. So my memory is that we actually got some VLF last year, but we weren't made whole.
VLF always have a two-years delay when the VLF.
But the amount that we were, that were generated last year was less than.
Last, actually, the current fiscal year, we received $1.9 million shortfall from two years ago. And last fiscal year, we received $5.7 million from something happened three years ago. So it's always a two-year delay. And the shortfall kind of changed year-over-year, but as we see property tax keep going up, we are projecting our school district is going to flip down the road. So we are taking a more conservative approach this year. We are estimating a $6 million shortfall, and we don't know whether the state is going to backfill that shortfall in two years. But what we are talking about is the $4.2 million that it happened two years ago, that the county and the city are currently working together. that the county and the city are currently working together to try to get it in the next fiscal year.
So in your in your question, you were asking what approach we should take?
I, yes. We would like to take a direction from the council from, because the three scenario are pretty dramatically different.
Right.
One is everything goes well. One is really nothing happened. And the middle ground scenario is also something we try to provide you a middle ground situation that is not the best, but it's not the worst. It's somewhere in the middle. So we would like to get your feedback in order to build something into the next year.
That's where I'm headed. Okay, so personally, I'm pretty conservative financially. I think it's a bad idea to go pessimistic, but I think we can't do better than middle ground. I think we have to be very careful.
Councilmember Lorraine, are you agreeing?
Yes. And I do have a question or two as well, if that would be fine. Thank you, through the mayor. And thank you, Karen, for your presentation.
Oh, it was a great presentation. Thank you. Very detailed.
I I think I did want to ask one question sort of based on the public comment we received. There was mention of pension obligation funds. And I just wanted to ask if like Section 115 and pension obligation funds are different or or similar or the same?
Pension 115 trusts, it's a trust that allow the city to set aside funding that is limited to pay for ongoing pension costs. Or you can contribute as a one-time to CalPERS to pay down your unfunded pension liability. As long as it's for pension, you can use it in the future. And the funding that you set aside in two 115 trusts, it's not limited to the investment policy that we set. It's really rigid how you can invest public money. When you put the money on a 115 trust, you can go with a different investment strategy. Depends on the risk level you want to take. And generally, I have seen other neighboring cities set up a 115 trust. They usually go with the the middle ground investment situation, estimated 4% to 5% annual investment return. So that is more a tool for budget stabilization, which is when you are doing well, you have surplus, you set aside some one-time surplus into a 115 trust. Or you have too much reserve, you you want to set aside something into a 115 trust. When when things are not quite certain, it go up and down, you can draw down on that trust to stabilize your budget. So it's a cash flow control tool that we can use. The the pension obligation bond, on the other hand, it's a way for city and and government to to try to save costs, to to reduce the pension liability, try to finance it, to pay it down because your interest rate is supposed to be lower than how much CalPERS charge you on their interest rate. But the current bond market, it's not a good market to issue bond right now. And I don't see much savings from that pension obligation bond if we issue a bond in order to adjust pension costs. So it really depends on the council's preferences. Is this the time to try to reduce our pension liability? Or we try to stabilize our budget in order to not have the pension contribution increase to impact our service level so we can continue to fulfill our obligation without cutting service, without impacting our operation? So this is two different directions that we we could go.
I appreciate that context. And I just, I think, to Councilmember Hedges's question, just wanted to confirm that I feel like I'm hearing that, to date, the state has made us whole but for the two-year gap with regard to VLF. So if that's the case, I just want to confirm that the middle ground assumption we have right now with regard to this idea of a VLF split or like receiving reduced revenue rather than getting made whole is maybe just seen as a as a way to kind of see a middle prediction scenario rather than actually anticipating we'll get less than, like some sort of reduced amount from the state?
So I'm happy to jump into that. So as Karen mentioned in the presentation, that our advocacy efforts, we we have to proactively advocate. And so we're working with the county right now. I'm part of a group, basically, with the county manager and two other city managers within San Mateo County to really work on our strategy. Well, our strategy, right, what we have right now is we need to ask for the full amount. This is monies that have been paid by our residents here locally. This is their property tax dollars, and it should not be taken away by the state. And that's the position that we all believe. You know, when you start looking at those funding gaps, that's serious to your emergency services, to just your overall services as an organization. And so something has to give that we, you know, there'll have to be some type of compromise in the future, I would I would hope. But at this moment, those funds are paid by our residents here locally. And, you know, every other county in the state receives those funds. So it's not fair that this county, just because it has a higher, you know, the the basic aid school system and just because of the higher property tax, they're getting penalized for this. And so that's that's the position that us cities and the county are advocating for. And so we're working with our local assembly member, Diane Pappin, and also our state senator, Josh Becker, and just with the overall kind of contingent, the peninsula contingent of state reps to really advocate. This is first where you're not even a line item whatsoever. That's that's a first. Out of all these years, you usually have at least a line item. Right now, there's not even a line item, which is a significant issue right now of concern. And so that's where we've been meeting every two weeks, discussing our overall approach with this. And so it is of concern, and hopefully, we'll know by June of, you know, where this where everything falls, at least for this current fiscal year coming up. So we'll have more information. And luckily, we're one of the luckier cities that we at least have some reserves. Some other cities don't have that. So then they're looking at how are they going to have to, you know, make cuts at that time.
Thank you, Alex. Alex is correct. Some city doesn't have the reserve like San Mateo. They start talking about hiring freeze and cutting some of their services. And we are not at that level yet because we are standing at a really strong financial ground. But we do need to sound the alarm and 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 let the council know how serious this problem can be. And so we have to prepare for it and and really advocate for that VLF shortfall money from from the state and and work with our delegation to advocate for that. And want to emphasize how important that is.
Thank you. Those are my questions. I'll just sneak in a comment that at this time, I I support the middle ground forecast. And I appreciate and agree, though, that not everything in the broader economy is necessarily dipping at this moment, but it may still be raining here in San Mateo. And I appreciate a collaboration with Public Works and considering that despite this, we still have needs and and funding our CIP now and continuing to fund our services using the rainy day fund that we do have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lee?
Thank you, Karen. I really appreciate the detail and and specifically making time to explain the different variables to each scenario and how how the picture will look so different with different assumptions. So I, you know, I also am inclined to support the middle ground. And I guess, you know, having gone through COVID and COVID budgeting, we did do a resiliency plan, and we made very hard asks, not knowing what, you know, what the, if the, if we were be made whole, what the recovery time would look like, if at all, VLF was a complete unknown, as always, right? And, you know, and I think that I would say that, you know, in taking the middle ground, I think the added layer of sort of more more conservative planning would be starting to get our head around what the bones of a resiliency plan could look like, should look like, you know, that we, you know, that we're thinking about, we're thinking proactively about that. And, you know, I'm not jumping to lower our reserve policy. You know, I would want to heavily weigh some of the the pros and cons in in those kinds of decisions. One of the things that, you know, our our city is, I think, should be really proud of is like we have an excellent credit score. Like we, you know, we are like A++. A++ students. And and so, you know, there are other sort of costs associated with, you know, with some of those decisions that that have a ripple effect that, you know, we can't possibly consider in this moment. And I know that we're not like making that decision right now. But I guess what I'm saying is that I would like us to be very methodical about, you know, about the getting our our ducks in line for what what the resiliency plan could look like. And, you know, and also, like, it's it's good to have this conversation and this this agenda item sort of sandwiched in between the previous conversation about like, well, you know, we've had all these CIP line items, you know, you know, basically just added to an ongoing list that's, you know, that's priority five, right, that we never get to, year five, that just doesn't come, doesn't come, and doesn't come. And then on the, you know, and we're about to turn towards another agenda item, which is how do we stay competitive, right, and recruit excellent staff members to join our team? And, you know, and make sure that we're investing in a robust, you know, a robust and healthy organization, right, to stay afloat? And so it's, I, you know, I appreciate the the sort of bookending that went into this this meeting. I I I want to us to be thinking about the relational and related aspects of every single agenda item. And so the the planning that went into this agenda development, I think, is very strategic. So, so, yes, I think that I I would support middle ground with with a strong preference for us getting very proactive around a resiliency strategy. And and I think the, I guess I will say that one of the things that I appreciated about our, you know, governing through COVID, which there's not a long list of things that I appreciate about it. But one of the things I think was that we had to be very iterative. And we weren't locked into hard policies that felt fixed, right, in time. And when, you know, when you're hit with a crisis that you have no forewarning about and you have no idea when it's going to end and what the true impact will be, it gave us a lot of flexibility. And I think the overarching principle that set us up for success in the recovery that we've had is is due in part to that level of flexibility and also taking a conservative approach, financially conservative approach. So I wouldn't want us to develop a policy that 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 puts us in concrete, right? That I don't want us to be beholden to policies that in a crisis time actually might not be appropriate, an appropriate financial response. So that that's kind of my my warning to my fellow councilmembers who, you know, being the senior in the room.
Well, taken. Let's take a stop right here because it's almost 11 o'clock, and we have to take a vote on whether we want to continue. Do I have a motion to continue the meeting beyond 11 o'clock?
I make a motion to continue for up to one hour, up until midnight.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Newsom?
Yes.
Councilmember Lorraine?
Yes.
Councilmember Hedges?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz Nash?
Yes, but I'd hope we could.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Newsom?
Just as I plan to extend the meeting with an hour, I hope we can can be done in a half hour. I I have the same financial perspective. I think we should plan for middle ground, but also really suss out what the worst-case scenarios are and and plan accordingly, as though if things go the pessimistic route, what are the what are the what are the parachutes? What are the things we can do to make sure that we keep the city in good stead? So that's my take. I appreciate your presentation, keeping it short. But middle ground is is what I say in in planning worst-case scenario.
I will make it 5-0 on the middle ground. But the one thing I will add to this discussion is I think we've got a huge revenue opportunity in grant funding. We do next-to-no grant solicitation and finding, and we have to invest in order to get the grants. But we are very unlike so many other cities that get so much money. And we pay our way, and that's very responsible. But that is also money that could be available to us. So I would really like to see a very aggressive investigation and investment in making that grant opportunity available. We need some muscle there. So that's that's my comment. Thank you. Thank you very much. So I think we are, you've got a fairly consistent perspective. And thank you very much for all the work and all your team's work. And let's hope that things go well. Okay, so with that, let's move on to new business number 14, City Manager, City Attorney, Department Head, and Deputy Director Compensation Plan Amendment. We're going to hear from our city manager.
Good evening, Mayor. The item before you is the City Manager, City Attorney, and Department Head Deputy Director Compensation Plan Amendment. What we're looking at action for this evening is council's consideration of amending a resolution to, one, first, add Juneteenth, June 19th as an annual holiday as part of this unit. Two is to increase salary range for the police chief classification. And three is to increase the salary range for the human resources director. First, on Juneteenth item, on February 22nd, 2024, Juneteenth was recognized by the city council as a citywide annual holiday beginning this year on June 19th. What this amendment would do is it would incorporate it into this group's MOU. Additionally, in looking at the just overall compensation, and I, Councilmember Lee, kind of led into it with the last item, just really trying to be able to attract and retain the best talent that the city has. One of the areas that historically San Mateo has worked towards is making sure that our staff is being compensated at a minimum of being median or slightly above median for salaries. And so as part of overall looking at class and comp studies that was completed back in February of this year for specifically for the department heads and deputy directors group that aren't represented by any group itself, there were some key positions that are not at median right now. And at this time, looking at two critical, two positions that we're looking at and that we've brought forward this evening is the police chief, who is 12% below median, the position right now compared to all our comparative agencies that we compare to with all our other groups. And then also the human resources director, which is 3.5% behind median as well. Specifically for the police chief, went through negotiations over this last round. So all all the units, except for the sergeants right now, are under negotiation. But a lot of the salary pieces have been have have been negotiated at this at this moment, understanding that we still have the sergeant's negotiation going. And then the human resources director, we've gone through recruitment and having just difficulties of making sure that we get the right individual for for the position and attracting the right talent. And so the 3.5% would help us out as we go back out for that recruitment as well. Overall, the hope is that these, the for that recruitment as well. Overall, the hope is that these, the two salary increases would take effect as of April 28th, 2024. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Public comment?
Madam Mayor, we have no request to speak on this item.
All right, thank you. Then we will close public comment, bring it back. Who would like to begin the discussion?
I think you clearly identified the salary increases. I think that it's not a good idea to have our Police Chief that far below the median. I'm very much in favor of this, and I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Lorraine?
I have no questions at this time, and I concur with Councilmember Hedges.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Lee?
Agreed. We do want to, at, at minimum, maintain our policy of, of being competitive at median and, and retain our, our good folks. So I, I support.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Newsom?
I do support all, all the suggestions.
And I make that five, and yes, we should adopt Juneteenth as well.
Yes.
So we're gonna need a sec, you know?
Yes, we need, yes. So
Make a motion?
Make a motion.
I'll move to honor the proposal for the wages for, put forth in the, in the agenda.
And then adding Juneteenth?
And adding Juneteenth. My grandmother's birthday.
Who would like to second it?
I'll second.
Okay. Could you please?
Councilmember Hedges?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Newsom?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Lorraine?
Yes.
And Mayor Diaz Nash?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. So let's now move on to reports and announcements. Who has reports and announcements? Councilmember Lorraine, do you have anything?
I'll just quickly thank you through the mayor report that if you haven't attended any Earth Month events, please make sure to consider joining us in the city of San Mateo. Close to Earth Day, which of course is April 22nd every year. It's always April 22nd. But that's a Monday, and we have a weekend before that. So please make sure to go to the main library. We have a puzzle swap in collaboration with Rethink Waste, which should be awesome. And I will be doing what I can to bring some well-loved board games and, and potentially puzzles.
I'll be right there with you. Absolutely.
Additionally, Rethink Waste is having an Earth Day celebration of its own on the following Saturday, which would be April 27th, at the Shoreway Environmental Center in San Carlos. It's 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, and I will be there closer to the end to do my best to make sure I show up for a tour of the recycling center, because it is awesome. And if you haven't done it yet, I highly recommend it. That would be Saturday, April 27th. And I'll just note that I appreciated the opportunity to go to the main library on April 2nd for a presentation in partnership with 350 Silicon Valley and Peninsula Clean Energy, among other partners, to talk a bit about home electrification and the possibilities of swapping out some gas appliances for electric ones and the benefits therein. This concludes my report and announcement.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Lorraine. Councilmember Hedges?
Just one thing. Last, last meeting, I mentioned that I'd been appointed to the Joint Powers Board. At the last meeting, I was appointed to the BPAC Committee for CCAG. So I'm now on three committees there. But I, we're, we're really short on, on committee members. People have been volunteering, so that's why I did it.
Okay, well, thank you for doing that on our behalf. We appreciate it. Councilmember Lee? Nothing? Okay. Deputy Mayor Newsom?
First thing is tomorrow is deadline for applications for boards and commissions. So just a reminder to try to get a last ditch in to see if we can get people to fill these spots. Do we know, Martin, how it's been looking? How people have been, how many people have applied, or?
I can share that we haven't met the minimum threshold for Community Relations Commission, Mosquito Infecter Abatement, or the Library Board. So those are, we're still looking to get more applications.
Thank you.
But there is a potential that we may be extending the recruitment based on the number of applications we receive.
Okay. Well, thank you for bringing that us up to speed. We'll all, let's all commit to doing another push today and tomorrow. Tomorrow. It's too late today. We've had people come in front of us today about dog parks. I was wondering if the council had an interest in bringing that back. I know that there's been talk of a potential second site that the city manager has been looking at as well. So just wanted to throw that out there and say thanks to all the people who came and let the dogs out.
Did you want to?
Add jokes.
Did you want to say anything, City Manager?
So, so in looking at, looking at the dog park, so we are looking right now in the downtown area for, you know, some, you know, potential pilot options within, it might not be a full, full-blown dog park, but maybe dog run or off-leash area. So staff is doing their due diligence, and we'll bring some more information in the future about potential opportunities. I want to be clear that, you know, now with the better weather, the hope is, I know it's not the permanent fix that the dog park group is looking for, but at least the area where the, the train has been, that, that is open right now for, for off-leash, or I'm hoping, well, no, it just rained, right? So maybe it's drying up here with the five days. But understanding, once again, that downtown plan for the future, that's another opportunity, really when you're looking at just benefits and public serving facilities, that that would be the appropriate place to really look at the long-term permanency. And it might be in Central Park. You know, we have a master plan right now that's, that's in there. But I think as we holistically look at the downtown, that's going to give us another opportunity there. But in the short term, if we can find some available space, that's what staff's looking at right now.
Sure. I also sit on the fire board, and one of the things that Alex and I talked about last week is the status of old Fire Station 25. There's a, an idea. Do you want to, do you want to? Okay, well, so there's an idea about potentially making that into a police substation for the motorcyclists. And also potentially, there could be other things there, like a Pal Clubhouse Room or something of that effect. Is there interest in the, or from the council in, in agendizing that and?
Through the mayor?
Yes, please.
I'm generally in support. I just want to ask a question related about, I, I guess I'm, I'm hoping and, and assuming that there would be some communication to the residents nearby. And, and would there be like some kind of change of signage, et cetera, or?
So before we would do anything at this point, I think first is coming back to the council with a, a bigger discussion. But two is actually, and talking with the chief is doing that community outreach and engagement, and really hearing from the council, what type of, and we were going to check with the Community Development Department just specifically, is it the 1,000, 500, 300 foot? Like, what is the radius to make sure that we're appropriately engaging the neighborhood over there? Specifically of, in talking with our Police Chief and just actually went and did a tour of the facility a couple of weeks ago, it's really strategically located, Fire Station 25, specifically for our motor team, which we heard about, what we talked about during our, our study session time, specifically, you know, being able to get down Barnison really quickly down to the downtown, going north towards Aragon High School, going south towards Beresford, but then also getting down the 92 and the 101 corridors. They can really quickly zip around town to be able to get, get to areas quickly compared to right now. Really moving from Alpha Hillsdale on the 101 at this point in time at the south portion of the city.
Just to finish on the thought, even if we did nothing, I don't think we should continue to let it be used as a storage for free. So I think there's a revenue opportunity that we should be taking with our, from our, you know, sharing with our sister cities that are part of our JPA. It shouldn't, you know, so at a minimum, I'd like it to be brought back and, and reviewed. And we can decide as a council, obviously, what direction we want to take, or even just, you know, give more, go back for more guidance.
Thank you. I support this.
Okay, so I got three. Thank you. The last thing was yesterday, I met with Al, I don't have Al's last name, from the Arab Culture and Community Center. The cities of San Bruno and the city of Foster City tonight are recognizing Arab Cultural, Arab Heritage Month in the month of April. And I told them that unfortunately, we missed the window for doing it probably this year, but I would like to see if there was support in bringing it back for next year.
Yes.
Yes.
So, Mayor? Yes.
So I was the only one from the city council that went to an event last fall, a Middle Eastern event. I was shocked. There must have been 4,000 people there. This is a big community. We need to actually welcome them.
Absolutely. Yeah, I, I go to Palestine Day every year in Foster City. This year, Palestine Day will actually not occur because the Foster City Rec Center is being torn down and remodeled. And, and there's also obviously security concerns of what, what could happen. But there's a large contingent from Ramallah, which is the capital of Palestine, that have a conference every year that floats around. And this coming summer, they're coming to Millbrae, to the peninsula in California. And they haven't been in California for like 10 years. So I think it's, it's a huge population here in the peninsula.
I wonder if they'll be inviting council people?
I, I have a hint that they will be. Okay, so do I have support for that?
Yes.
Yes, fantastic. Thank you. Those are all the comments and announcements.
Yeah, absolutely.
We take care of each other. Okay, so I have, I have three things. One, building on what Deputy Mayor Newsom just said about the Arab American Heritage Month, I think it would be a wonderful idea to reach out to the group and talk to them about having a group of dancers or performers coming to our B Street Pedestrian Mall as potentially one of the, the cultural groups that we're, we're talking about. I would think that would be a, a nice thing to be evaluated, along with other community groups, too. I think there's just so much we can do with that. Number two, I'd like to congratulate the Library Foundation on a very successful San Mateo Celebrates Week, which it was in Celebration National Library Week, the 7th to the 14th. And just another, the second year of incredible opportunities every day of the week. And talk about resiliency. Saturday, it was, they were going to have a wonderful thing in Central Park. Guess what? Mother Nature decided to rain on Saturday. But they flipped it around and said, we're better to hang out on a rainy Saturday than in the library. And they brought all of the acts indoors, had an incredible success. And then in the evening, had a cocktail party and fundraiser. It was extremely well-attended and very successful as well. So I would like to, to really congratulate them on that because that was no, no easy thing to do. And the third thing, I'd like to make all of my fellow council members aware. We have received an invitation from Sustainable San Mateo County to do a video call with a team to help us understand about the different tools that Sustainable San Mateo County has to offer cities. I, for one, have loved their idea database for many years, where if one city comes up with a great idea related to sustainability, the whole idea, not just we did this, but here's the code we wrote, here are the issues we ran through. I mean, it's soup to nuts. And every time they update the program, they update the database, too. So it's a database that I'm sure our city has looked at, but we should look at consistently. But I would, I will be on this call, and I would like to invite one of my fellow council members to join me. And Christina, you want to say anything about timing or what the next steps would be?
I don't know that there's too much else to add. They, they asked for our mayor, one council member, and three or four staff members to join the meeting, just so that they could give us a walkthrough and some general information and show us what they're going to use their annual contribution money for, which is already budgeted. So you guys don't, don't have to talk about that.
Hurrah, thank you. There, we have to figure it out. We have to figure out the, we have to figure out the date.
It'll be, they're, they're asking for, I can't remember if it was the first half or second half. I think it's the second half of May.
Between the, the May 13th and the 31st.
Yeah. And they're asking for one hour.
Mayor, I am also interested.
Okay.
We may have to Rochambeau for it.
Okay, well.
Well, I, I'm really just thinking about how you mentioned you've got three CCAG assignments. Let me lighten your load here. I appreciate it.
What a collaborative group we are. So I guess we have Councilmember Lorraine, who will come back and give us a full report, right? Okay, so.
Thank you.
You have, you have your information. And I think with that, we can adjourn council and what an evening this was. So thank you all very much. And it's not even midnight. So we are improving on the record.